Good afternoon, please be seated. May I welcome members and the viewing public to this meeting of the full council which is being held at Ponsford International Sports Centre. Please can I ask the Director of Legal and Governance to announce the housekeeping arrangements, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I have your attention while I make a few housekeeping announcements? The venue has no current requirements regarding social distancing or face coverings, however, to help keep everyone safe, face coverings are recommended when moving around the venue and hand sanitiser is available for you to use. If you have any concerns or are unsure, please ask a member of staff. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point is at the front of the building. Can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode? Roaming microphones will be used for councillors wishing to speak from the main floor of the meeting room. Please allow time for the democratic services officer to reach you before you stand and begin to speak, so that you can be heard clearly. The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. Photography, video and sound recording of the meeting is permitted, but the Lord Mayor does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting, is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or if a member of the public participating objects to being recorded. Any member of the public due to speak at the meeting who does not wish to be recorded should say so at the start of their speech and the Lord Mayor will suspend the permission to record their contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, Gillian. I shall conclude these housekeeping announcements by stating that this meeting is scheduled to finish at 5.30, but I propose to adjourn the meeting at the appropriate point in the proceedings to give members the opportunity to take a comfort break. Item two on the agenda is for apologies of absence. The list of apologies I have today is Francine Johnson, councillor Mulfrathool, councillor Rivers, councillor Turpin, councillor Sophie Wilson. Item three on the agenda is declarations of interest or inability to vote on the setting of the council tax charge. Members have been provided with advice on the position and declarations of interest in relation to the setting of the council tax charge. With that advice in mind, does any member wish to declare an interest in the item on the Revenue Budget and Capital Programme 2022/23, or declare an inability to vote on the setting of the council tax where they have council tax arrears of at least two months? Does any member wish to declare an interest in any other item on the agenda? Today we have been given notice of an urgent notice of motion and I am preparing to move to that now. Council Procedure Rule 26 states that an item of business may be considered at a meeting of the council as a matter of urgency, where it has not been possible to give five clear working days' notice on the recommendation of the Chair, but the reason for such urgency it must be recorded in the minutes. Any non-confidential or non-exempt report relating to such items must be made available for the public to inspect once it has been issued. In light of the conflict in Ukraine, it is proposed that a notice of motion regarding that matter is considered as an urgent item of business at today's council meeting. The reason for the urgency and explanation of why this was not possible to submit this motion in accordance with the usual timescale is that this is clearly an important matter of concern for members of the council and the community of Sheffield, and it is important for the council to make a statement on the matter at the earliest opportunity. The conflict escalated after the agenda for the meeting and had been published on their ordinary meeting of the council in June. In view of the nature of this timing of this issue, I am satisfied that there are clear reasons to take this notice of motion as an urgent item of business. The proposed motion was circulated to members of the council yesterday and has now been published on the council's website. Copies of the motion are available in this venue. It is proposed that the urgent item be considered at this point in the proceedings, as agreed. So, the urgent item of business, notice of motion regarding Ukraine. There is a maximum time of 25 minutes for this item. I am going to move...
Sorry. Lord Mayor?
Yes?
Could I ask if we can allow representatives from the Ukrainian community first to address the council before we go into the motion?
Absolutely. Do we know who this person is?
Lena, at the bike.
Dear council members...
No, it is not good enough, I cannot hear you properly. Is there another microphone, please?
Dear council members, apologies, I am not really good with technical, as you can see. Truly speaking, I did not prepare to speak in front of you now, but I wanted to address you on two regards. First of all, I wanted to say thank you for all the support that we got from the council so far. We were overwhelmed how warm people in Sheffield are and how supportive the politicians in Sheffield are. And we wanted to ask you, please do not stop in supporting Ukraine, because there are urgent changes needed on national level, and without that we will not be able to reach peace in Ukraine. I just today was reminded by Facebook, looking at my page, that I posted in 2014, on this day, saying that if the world don't do now, when Crimea was annexed, we are going to get Third World War soon, because Russia will not stop themselves, they need others to stop them. That is exactly as it was when Second World War started and when Nazi Germany in that time would not stop as well. So the situation is repeating, the history is repeating, and similar as, the UK acted actively and stood up against Nazism in that time, we need joint efforts and we need to stand up together against Nazism again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jude, and thank you so much for giving your time up to come and speak to us today. Thank you. I was saying, there is a maximum of 25 minutes for this item on the agenda. I do apologise, I believe I have just said thank you to Jude and I have not even asked her to ask a question, so there is someone else in this audience that wishes to ask a question.
Yeah. I may have preempted everything and I am preempting perhaps the discussion that you are about to have, but I would really like to leave the chamber this afternoon with some idea of the steps, what exactly, what specifically Sheffield City Council might do to help Ukraine and the people of Ukraine. Thank you very much. Joachim Vau.
I am tempted to say to you that this motion is now going to be debated within the next 25 minutes, so if you have got 25 minutes, you will hear the answer to your question. Otherwise, we do have this meeting webcast. Does that help? Thank you. So I am going to move this motion, but I am not going to say too much, because I know that there are other people that wish to speak on this item. But personally, I am shocked and dismayed at what is happening in Europe. I am ashamed that this is happening today, and so, so sad. Every time I turn the television on to see the women and children fleeing for their lives, and men, proud of men. I am sorry, I have been interrupted. So, I just want to say how sad we all are, and here in Sheffield, we are proud to have become the first city of sanctuary in this country, and our arms are wide open. It is up to the government now, we need them to allow us to bring people to Sheffield and make them feel safe. I am now going to call on my colleague councillor Peter Price to second the motion and speak up for two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thanks for giving me the honour of making this second of this motion. My links with the Ukraine, and particularly Donetsk, go back to the early 80s, and I remember the debates when it was proposed that Sheffield would link with a city within the Soviet Union, and the horror that was expressed at that time by many members of the public, it is still around today. And of course, we previously done it with Germany, who was one of our main enemies, with Boko'Nak. And so this internationalism that this city has goes back a long way, and that is why I am so proud to be part of this city of sanctuary. Just to say a little bit about my links with Donetsk, because I was on the civic delegation that went in 1986, and I have got an album, there are some pictures, if people are interested. Not only that, but we brokered the meeting of the mayor of Boko'Nak at the same time, so we had the West Germans, because it was still West and East Germany at the time, Sheffield and Donetsk, meeting together for the first time, with the first city in this country to link with the Soviet Union as it was, and with Germany, and I am quite proud of that. Of course, from that delegation, many, many links developed, several schools linked up with schools in Donetsk, Firth Park was one, my son went, many sports teams did, Sheffield FC played in Donetsk, many arts groups did, and it was tremendous cooperation, if you like, and friendships that have developed over the years, and I have still got... Well, I have lost touch with them these days since the actual twinning thing began to wound down, I guess with budgets, but with the breakdown of the Soviet Union and the tend to act as agents, it left Donetsk a little bit separate. But I almost relate this one memory of being in Donetsk, because it was one of my best bits of being a politician, really. I was a thousand feet down the pit in Donetsk, sat on a pile of dust, cold dust, very low ceiling, with the miners of Donetsk. The Lord Mayor of Sheffield was Frank Prince, the mayor of Donetsk and the mayor of Boko'Nak, the first time we had met, and with the miners sat round drinking cold sweet tea, and that will ring with me forever and a day, that lovely friendship that developed and has continued to this day, and I am sure shocked and stunned at what has happened in this last week. Because to be quite honest, there were a number of Russians as well, and it was like Scotland and England, really, at the time. How this has suddenly developed into this horrendous attack is way beyond me, Lord Mayor. So I am quite happy that we give our full support and backing, send our love to all our people in the Ukraine, and particularly Donetsk, and hopefully this can be ended soon. But unless we get rid of that idiot who is purported to speak on behalf of the Russian people, is beyond me, and it has got to be broken, and the West has got to do its stage. And I hope, and I know, this city is going to do its stage in helping, and we will do our best to help any people seeking sanctuary, and I know I speak on behalf of everybody in here, that we are a city of sanctuary, and we would be proud to do our bit, and more if necessary, as we have done in the past. So, May, once again, thanks for allowing me to second this notice of motion, and I beg for everybody to give it that support. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Price, and at the end of this debate, I am going to allow you to come back in and finish off. So now I will ask the leader of the council, councillor Fox, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thanks for everyone for standing shoulder to shoulder over the last few days. We have all responded with shock and horror to the situation in Ukraine. This is not a war that the Russian citizens wanted, but a war waged by Putin and his military commanders. The war on Ukraine is unprovoked, completely unjustifiable, an heinous violation of international law that is having tragic consequences. The majority of those fleeing are women and children, with men aged 18 to 60 being prevented from leaving. We know the conditions in UK will worsen, and with a significant convoy of Russian tanks less than 20 miles away from the Ukraine capital, and barbaric and large-scale shelling of major towns and cities. At times like these, we may well feel powerless, but we must take a standing in complete solidarity with Ukrainian people, and they are bravely resist this assault. And we must also do what we can to support those who are fleeing and offer sanctuary. I am proud that Sheffield is a city of sanctuary, and I am proud that we have got councillor Mick Rooney here who signed that off, and we should provide a safe place to people in their time of need. Ultimately, immigration and asylum matters, rests with the national government, but as a city, we cannot stay silent, and that is why, after this notice of motion, we will be getting a letter to government, we will be working with our MPs to push, to open up and expedite and accelerate that immigration process. As a council, we have condemned war and offered support wherever this may be in the world. Only recently with Afghanistan, Yemen, Palestine, Syria, Myanmar, Samhellen, I could go on, on all the countries, so much bloodshed, so much horror. We must continue to speak out against international atrocities and the war, and to provide a safe haven for those in need. The government must provide urgent humanitarian assistance and to work with Ukraine's neighbours. And rather than sitting on their hands at home, the Home Secretary must speed up the immigration system. We will, as I say, be writing, and as you quite rightly, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? Are we just going to sit there and say kind words? No, we are going to take as much action as we possibly can, and I say as we work with our MPs. As a city, we will stand shoulder to shoulder, and in these times of crisis, Sheffielders always stand up for what is right, and it is heartening to see all here, so many in our city offering support. And that is why we are already working closely with Sheffield charities and the city of sanctuary to publish guidance on how we can support and what support is best provided. We have to realise that it is a place of war, and has been raised today in our group by councillor Dondale, that are already crying out for bandages, for tourniquets, for those issues. We need to target that support. We are and we will be on our website, where we can direct people, and we will be working straight after with our officers. Human beings are human beings, wherever they are, Ukrainians need our help, and we will turn our back on them. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Fox. Can I call upon councillor Shafik Mohammed, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, colleagues, for allowing this debate on such an important issue. For me, I am one of the councillors that voted for the city of sanctuary status, and this is a time now to actually show that we are a genuine city of sanctuary by actually offering sanctuary to those who are seeking it. I welcome the fact that councillor Fox and the council will be writing to government to say we are willing and able and ready to accept people from Ukraine to come and seek sanctuary in our city, and we will continue to press for justice and hold Putin to account for his actions. I, for my part, would also use my connections in Europe to actually continue to work with my former European parliamentary colleagues. I know Katarina Csik from Hungary has already been to Ukraine, and we will continue to work with them as well to say that we will, as a world, need to be united, and I welcome what happened in Geneva the other day when Sergei Lagorov stood up to speak, when 140 representatives from across the world walked out. We have got to isolate Russia and Putin, but we are not against the Russian people, because many brave Russian people have actually stood out and demonstrated, and at great risk to themselves. But we want to send a message to the people of Ukraine, not just in Sheffield, but to their police relate, that Sheffield stands with Ukraine in its time of need, we will do what we can. We have already sent food, we will try to get more food to the people of Ukraine. We also, I understand, people are getting armoured plates for the soldiers, so we are doing our bits not only to support those that need humanitarian assistance, but also military assistance, and I am sure our government will continue to provide the weapons that are needed to give Putin a bloody nose so he can be sent packing back. Slava Ukrainia, glory to Ukraine!
Thank you, councillor Shafik. Can I call upon councillor Masters, please? Can we have a microphone? Thank you. After councillor Masters, I am going to call upon councillor Garbit, so can you please raise your hand so that people know you are next? Councillor Masters?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I have not got a prepared speech, and I am going to try to control my emotions. The reason why this matters to me is because I was born in a displaced persons camp in Dorset, because my parents were pushed out of Poland, the bit that is now east Ukraine. So I have got links with Ukrainians, all right? My relations are there, and I was brought up knowing how horrendously the population was treated by Russia, the Russian state, the dangers posed by Russia. I was brought up, basically, sort of the Russian bear does not let go of anything that it has once held. We have experienced it in Poland, Ukraine is experiencing it, all Ukrainians know exactly what I am talking about, but my main point is, in this country, we think freedom, we take freedom for granted, we can't. Freedom is such a precious, fragile commodity, that unless we look after it and those people who fight for freedom, we are going to lose ours. It is being nibbled at away at the moment. We can't ignore the problem, we do need help, but don't forget, the Ukrainians want to stay in their country, they want to enjoy safety, freedoms in their country, they want a right to self-determination, just like we have here. And yes, I am so pleased that Sheffield will provide refuge, but we need help, we need the government to actually push, to stop this awful aggression, just because I have got memories, I was brought up with all the memories of the Second World War, and life of my relations under Stalin, and under Soviet domination afterwards, and none of us want to experience that. But I think I am going to stop there, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Johnson?
Sorry, I didn't have you on the list, I am sorry. Thank you, Lord Mayor, there is no need to apologise to me. I just want to say a few words again to say thank you for the people from Ukraine who are here with us today. I said outside, the issue is one of human cost, this is a human issue. This is about people in Sheffield deeply, deeply affected by what is happening right now, and as I said a few minutes ago, the military aggressor is always wrong, and the people are always right. And at the same time that we see such terrible issues going on in Ukraine, we know that there is popular dissent in Russia itself, we know there are good people in all countries, and we don't know how long it will take for those good voices to prevail. In the long run, they must prevail, they always will. But for today, I know that people ask, you know, what will we do? One very important thing we can do is the fact, and I am going to say thanks to councillor Miskell for just making this photograph happen outside, I would ask the media to show that all elected councillors elected to this city and people from the Ukrainian community are together to send the message that we must stand together, we must call on the government to do what it can, what it must do, to protect those people who can escape from the Ukraine, and to support those who can't. And I think one of the worst things is that we have some of our Sheffield people here who have their families, whose homes are being destroyed, and their communities are being destroyed, and their cities are being destroyed, right now, and they can't get there, they can't, they can't get there, for their arms around the people they actually love. So I think we just need to remember that, and say thank you for being here today, and we will do what we can, even though it is such the days when things are changing so fast, and there is a lot we don't know yet.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Marouf?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I mean firstly, I agree with everything that has been said so far, and I thank the people of Ukraine who are here with us today. I can't imagine what you are actually going through, it must be absolutely appalling, sitting here and thinking how your families are coping in Ukraine. I mean, I can't even imagine waking up and finding everything that was actually normal yesterday, going to school, going to work, just carrying on with domestic life and social engagements, all suddenly gone. It just seems unbelievable and unimaginable that in the 21st century that this can be allowed to happen. The house that you actually called your home, no longer a home anymore, it is something that you are running away from. It is just absolutely appalling, the scenes that we are actually seeing on our screens, and even parents having to split up from their children, I can't imagine that, and to say we can, we can't, because we are not in that situation. For what we can say is that we from Sheffield will certainly stand side by side with you, and I urge every single councillor in this chamber to actually sign whatever letter that we are going to be proposing to central government, and stand with the people of Ukraine and welcome people of Ukraine into this city, as we have done with many, many other nationalities as well. as well. Whilst we're talking about Ukraine, I think we should remember on this day conflicts which are taking place all over the world. And again, it's something that we have debated in this chamber and we have stood side by side with those people. People of Kashmir, people of Yemen, people of Palestine, people of Syria. We are now realising how difficult it is in those environments as well. And although we totally stand with Ukraine at this moment in time, we should also recognise the fact there are issues all over the world where oppression is taking over from normal life. And honestly, it does actually make me cry this, to be fair, because my own family during partition, we lost quite a lot of our family, friends killing friends, absolutely appalling. And I for one stand directly with you, Ukraine. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Marouf. Councillor Garbutt?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I've listened to the people from Ukraine here today. I've listened to many of my colleagues. And I'd like to just say that I completely agree with everything that's been said. But I'd like to offer also another practical matter that we can undertake as a council, where I agree that there are many things we can do. One of the things that we need to do is to declare this to the world, to declare what Sheffield is doing and how Sheffield feels about this. We could call it the Sheffield Declaration. We could get as many people from across this country and other countries to sign it, to put pressure on governments to make sure that measures were taken to avoid conflicts, to avoid the very things councillor Marouf was talking about, about the loss of normality overnight. I think something like this could be achieved fairly quickly, bringing together all the sentiments that have been spoken about today. And that could perhaps form part of the letter, but perhaps also be something separate. So that's my practical contribution to this debate.
Thank you councillor Garbutt. Councillor Richards?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. If you grew up in Wales studying Welsh history, one of the bits of history you learned was about Ysifka, which is named after Mr Hughes, who was the Welshman who actually founded Donnytsk. And that was part of our history growing up, that we knew we had a stake in it. We also know that it was a Welsh reporter, Gareth Jones, who was the first person to actually report on the Holodomor, which is the huge famine of the 30s, which was caused by collectivisation, where the Ukrainian people died in their millions. And this was because of the Russian, at that time Soviet government decreeing that this is what would happen. And in particular, the Cossacks were affected by it. So I think we know why the Ukraine, Ukrainian people have a real fear of what Russia will do. Why is Russia now behaving like this? Well, I'll tell you that in 2019, my husband was part of the International European Election Observation Corps, who went to observe and make sure that the elections in Ukraine were fair and free. And they were. And he texted me to say, the bloke off the telly has won, Sean, with 73% of the vote. And that was Mr Zelensky, President Zelensky as we see him now, who has just risen to his role magnificently. And the reason the Russians don't like that is because the previous president, Poroshenko, he was a Russian stooge, but we know that Zelensky isn't, that he wants freedom and he wants his country to be able to choose their own way to the future. And that's why we now need to support this country. I'll just say, I've got half an empty house with a son away and no longer having a husband. I'm happy to take in a refugee family if it's needed, because that's what we do in Sheffield. Thank you.
Councillor Price, I'm now going to let you speak again, if you wish.
Give me a chance. Just to say, Lord Mayor, how proud I am of this city council, how all the groups have come together unanimously to support this notice of motion. And it just, it actually shows us how we've developed over history. I mean, I guess we all thought Europe had learnt its lesson in 45 and we'd never come round this street again, but clearly we have. We haven't learned that lesson. We still allow bullies and megalomaniacs to get to the top and perhaps that should apply to everybody. So once again, thanks everybody for the support of this notice of motion. Let's get this spread round, let Putin know that not just this, the whole of the world horrified at what he is doing in our Europe. So once again, thanks for everybody and let's get this off and publicise this as wide as we possibly can to get other cities to follow suit. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I'd just like to say thank you to everyone who spoke in this afternoon. It's quite clear that here in Sheffield, we are open and ready to welcome anyone from Ukraine that wishes to come here. So we're now going to move to the vote. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Thank you, that's clearly carried. This concludes the business. We're now going to move to public questions. Public questions can be asked and petitions can be presented at this council meeting. Questions and petitions are required to be submitted two clear days in advance of these Covid-safe meetings to enable the public to attend at the meetings. For this meeting, there are three petitions and they will be presented. And then the questions, public questions have been received also. There are other people that have asked to come and ask a question and I have said that they can do so. In view of the number of petitions and questions received for this meeting, I expect that the one hour time limit may be reached. I'm keen that residents are allowed a voice at these full council meetings. But at this particular meeting, I do want to ensure that as much time as possible is made available for elected members to debate the budget. Therefore, please may I request that the petitioners be brief and keep within the time limit of three minutes. May I also request the executive members in answering questions to keep within the maximum time of five minutes when responding to petitions? May I also ask that questioners be brief as possible when asking their questions and that the executive members keep their responses short and succinct? Thank you in advance for your cooperation. May I call upon the director of legal and governance to announce the petitions, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've received an electronic petition containing 20 signatures requesting an e-scooter riding academy and safe space for children. Gordon Riley wishes to address the council. Mr Riley, if you could make your way to a microphone. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is my first time before the council, so I appreciate the time you've given me.
Not here.
Sorry.
Can you just stand closer to the microphone, please, sir?
I can indeed. My name's Gordon Riley. This is the first time I've been before the council and I appreciate your time. Thank you. So I'm 51 years old, I own two businesses in Sheffield and I feel I have a responsibility. One of the businesses I have is an electric scooter, an electric bicycle shop and repair centre. And one of the main features we found in running our business for the past two years is how many children are buying these or parents are buying these scooters for the children. And that's not something that was in our business plan whatsoever. And we're aware of the dangers that are posed because of children riding on streets and riding on roads. It's not something we advocate at all. So we're looking for the council to help us with partnerships, to find some space where we can educate children on the rules of the road. When they are old enough to go and hire from higher schemes that are illegal in the UK, they're already educated, they're safe and they know why they're using electric vehicles rather than fossil fuel vehicles. I know Sheffield City Council is very pro-environmental friendly. I know we're looking for clean renewable energies and electric vehicles such as electric scooters, electric bicycles, electric cars are the future. And my companies want to be a major advocate of this, starting in Sheffield, then creating an Electric England network. And with your help and your permission, we'd like to see this go forward, starting initially with safe space and electric scooter academies that'll be non-profit based and potentially run in after school clubs where people can learn how to maintain their vehicles and also how to ride safely and use proper etiquette. That's all I need to say. If there's any further questions, I'm contactable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Riley. Thank you. It's recommended the petitions refer to councillor Alison Teale, the executive member for Sustainable Neighbourhoods, Wellbeing, Parks and Leisure.
Thank you Chair. And may I give my apologies for arriving late at the meeting today. Thank you Gordon for bringing this petition. It was, it's a very interesting issue and I agree with you that we certainly do have to support all the low carbon means of transport we have available to us. However, there's one particular issue with e-scooters and that is, I'm sure you're well aware, that currently the legislation doesn't support the riding of e-scooters on pavements or roads. And for that reason, and, oh sorry, I should also mention, you're probably also aware that there's currently a trial being conducted by the Department for Transport. There's several areas around the UK that are being trialled for the use of e-scooters. Sheffield isn't one of them. And therefore it is still illegal to ride a scooter on a pavement or a road in Sheffield. For that reason, we're concerned that it could create some confusion if we do start training people to ride scooters and to learn the road rules and the highway code etcetera for the specific use of scooters, because it could perhaps lead to people thinking that it is acceptable, that it is currently legal when it's not. So I would welcome you offering the training when the legislation's been clarified, when the trials are concluded and the government have time to put forward a series of recommendations on their use. Because I guess it's possible that government will determine that we're not going to allow it and then of course the training wouldn't be necessary or helpful. So I hope that you're understanding of that. I think what you're wanting to offer is good. I'm hoping the government will decide that it can be legal and then you can really get going training lots of people. But right now, we can't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I've received a petition containing 160 signatures requesting the council to improve access for elderly people, young women and children to Mount Pleasant Park. Nagat Basharat wishes to address the council. Ms Basharat, would you like to come forward to the microphone?
Hi. First of all, can I just say a big thank you to Lord Mayor, to you for allowing me to speak today. I'm from the Sherrill area and the petition I am presenting today is on behalf of the residents of Netheredge and Sherrill, who use the Mount Pleasant Park, including those out of the area. Concerns have been raised by residents regarding one part of the Mount Pleasant Park, which is used as a dumping site and due to the state it is now. It has been reported as an attraction for drug use and antisocial behaviour, creating fear and then not using the park. Used drug needles have been left with blood stains on them, which is very concerning as young children also use this area. Some form of lighting towards the entrance of the park and where the cricket pitches would allow clear visibility during the evening time, which adds a sense of security for those living nearby, including women to feel safe. Myself, working in the health field, I strongly encourage people to do their local walks or strolls in the parks when they are going through low mood and mental health issues. And I feel if this park, part of the park is beautified to match the rest of the park area, it could encourage local residents to use this green space, which I feel is very important for people's health and wellbeing. Unfortunately, when you have local parks that are not welcoming, abandoned, where they are then used for other reasons, causes barriers for locals to gain any benefits and the area is looked down upon. So I would like to seek your support in the following, please. To improve access for elderly people with disabilities, young women and children to Mount Pleasant Park by providing new seats and benches, improving lighting to the park to deter antisocial behaviour and drug use, replacing the rotten and dangerous wood, providing up to date facilities including exercise machines and planting seasonal flowers and plants to make the park more welcoming, like a therapeutic garden, and tidying up that park regularly which has overgrown bushes to prevent park being used as a dumping ground and fly tipping hotspot. And finally, I just want to stress that this issue has been a problem for a while and I would respect and appreciate this to be looked at sooner to improve our green spaces so that our local residents and children can enjoy this with their families. And I just wanted to add to that, that investing in cleaning up the park will promote good mental health and healthy living alongside creating safe places for children to play and others to socialise. Thank you.
Thank you. It's recommended that the petitions refer to councillor Alison Teale, executive member for Sustainable Neighbourhoods, Wellbeing, Parks and Leisure.
Thank you Chair. Hi Nagat. It would be good for us to go for a visit together, I think, to Mount Pleasant Park. Shall we do that and have a chat about all this? I spoke to the parks manager this morning and yeah, we were a bit confused actually because he said access issues and I was wondering if there was something about some uneven ground or some sort of problems like that. So I'd misunderstood actually what you were thinking about. So lighting near the cricket pitch, that's an interesting idea, something that we can look at and something that the Greens have got in their budget amendment actually today, is that we're looking at lighting in parks. And so yeah, I'd be very, very pleased to speak to you about that. In terms of antisocial behaviour, parks are well aware that there are problems with needles and they are collected regularly. I've been assured that that's the case. So people are still finding that is a worry and if you can contact me and let me know if that happens, because it's been swept on a daily basis. As in, sorry, oh sorry. It's been looked at daily. So that's really concerning if people are still coming across them. Yes, the benches, a lot of the benches in the park were actually removed because of antisocial behaviour reasons, because it was leading to groups of people sort of congregating around the benches and so they were taken out to try and reduce it. As were a lot of the bushes and planting were removed as well to try and reduce antisocial behaviour and to stop the needle waste as well. So it's really tricky, isn't it, to get a balance right between those things? But certainly something we're happy to look at. Also in terms of the planting, I know that Wild Sheffield did the planting. Also, in terms of the planting, I know that Wild Sheffield did the planting there. You're perhaps aware that they did the wildflower strip, which was really lovely. And I think that they're wanting to extend the work that they're doing as well. And so it'd be really good for you to meet up and talk to those people as well. They can be contacted through Sherrill Community Forum. If you'd like to do that, I'd be happy to introduce you as well through the contacts that I have. So I suggest if you can just, you know, we, we chat on WhatsApp, don't we? So if you can just send me a message and let me know a good time for you to visit, I'd be pleased to, to meet you at the park and maybe with the other councillors for Netheredge and Sherrill as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I've received a petition containing 123 signatures requesting action regarding odor and noise problems at Abbey Glen Westfield. Shaun Corey wishes to address the council. Mr Corey, if you'd like to come forward. I believe you've also got three questions, so if you would like to present your petition and ask your questions at the same time.
At the same time. Thank you, Lord Mayor. My name is Shaun Corey. I represent residents in the Waterthorpe and Westfield area of Sheffield. I'd like to start by giving you a little bit of background to Abbey Glen Laundry. They are based on Carly Drive, Westfield. Carly Drive is a B1 site and we would dispute that Abbey Glen are a B1 industry. They're more like a B2, B8 business. So as I've said, Carly Drive is a designated B1 industrial estate. Abbey Glen breach the B1 business rules due to smell and noise. Abbey Glen is in a large residential area and has houses on three sides of it. The previous occupants were quiet. Around June 2020, the site was acquired by Abbey Glen at a 35% discount. Their worksop factory had burnt down and a new site was needed. In July 2020, they requested an extension to delivery hours, which would have been 0400 to 2200 hours, that's 18 hours. In October 20, the requested extension was refused planning permission on grounds of loss of amenity for residents and antisocial delivery hours. Our problem started in October 2020 with very noisy installation and refurb work. This happened seven days a week. The residents accepted most of this in good faith, but sometimes environmental protection were involved. Abbey Glen paid lip service to their warnings. The site became operational in April 21 and the hours that they worked very quickly went to 18 hours per day, five days a week. Many residents therefore suffer from sleeping problems due to this, often only getting five hours sleep per night. We're often woken up by the sound of the steam generators at 6am or earlier and the tonal noise that's been identified can be heard through bedrooms with windows shut right up to midnight. In the summer, when ventilation is needed due to the heat, it's impossible to sleep with windows open due to the noise. In June 21, due to noise complaints, environmental protection were involved and instructed the acoustic survey company Hepworths to investigate. This was done with the full knowledge of Abbey Glen. Noise was deemed too severe. There is also an odor. It smells not of linoleum like many people think, but of a burnt, starchy chemical smell. This has been investigated by environmental protection, but due to the vagaries of a smell, it couldn't be proven. Smells move, who knew? People continue to smell this, this smell and continue to shut the windows. We had a recent incident yesterday. Between July and December 21, the noisy attenuation works were carried out. There was a repeat of the contractor problems. In December 21, the second sound, the second sound survey was carried out. Now, during this time, there's been a small reduction in noise, but we can still hear it in our homes at times above our televisions. A petition with around 200 names, I'll come on to that later, all object to noise, smell and a massive increase in traffic. Now, this petition was carried out after the second noise survey, so things are still bad. People are angry, annoyed and feel badly let down due to the severe decline of the residents' mental and physical health. Some people are taking peaceful, direct action. The police are now involved. All our three ward councillors, so Labour members and the Lib Dems, together with advice from the Green Party and massive action from Clive Betts, all parties have been involved and their help has been immense and it's been very, very welcome. However, due to poor planning restrictions that were applied to the initial application, for instance, reasonable restrictions are on deliveries and outside storage, but not on working hours or collections. Abbey Glen can work 24 hours a day, they can collect 24 hours a day. These planning mistakes have been seized upon by Abbey Glen. And even those restrictions are broken regularly, but no enforcement has been carried out to date. The banging of huge trolleys up to 18 hours a day is a further breach of planning and source of sleep disturbance. Many residents are unable to enjoy sitting outside due to the noise and the smell. Planning has been quite specific. Amenity shouldn't be lost, but we've lost it. We don't even get bank holidays off as Abbey Glen often work these. There are reports of some residents selling their homes and of others moving bedrooms just to get some sleep. Jobs to the area, really? There is a very poor reputation of this company. There is reports of them lying to Tony Downing, bullying of employees and arrogance to residents in the old Doncaster site. All this is online, all this can be proven. And don't forget about the jobs that you're destroying in the neighbourhood through people not being able to work due to lack of sleep. On another point, the traffic problems are terrible on Carly Drive. Other companies, other businesses despair of the dangerous parking. Again, police are involved. Throughout this time, Abbey Glen have constantly broken the rules and when caught, blamed the staff or called it a one-off. They've made mugs of everyone. And just when we thought when things couldn't get worse for us, we hear rumours of Abbey Glen wanting to reapply for the 0400 hours to 2200 hours deliveries and for outside storage. Their attitude is if they don't like it, don't like the rules, will change them. We are ordinary Sheffielders, we are NHS workers, we are bus drivers, we are shop assistants, salespeople, electricians, lorry drivers, council workers, ordinary people whose lives have been ruined. All we want to do is to get to sleep at night, enjoy being in our gardens and homes, not live in fear of losing our livelihoods due to lack of sleep. Some residents breach health and safety guidance of driving while tired. Ask yourselves, do you really want to be on a bus driven by a driver that's only had five hours sleep? I can't emphasise it enough. If this is allowed to continue or get worse, parts of this area will become uninhabitable. And that is a point that was conceded by a council officer. He agreed with what I said. No one can live next to a noisy, smelly, 24-hour operation. Carly Drive was never designed for that. Holbrook was. I'm going to leave you with three quotes. Developments or change of use shall not cause residents or visitors in any housing to suffer from unacceptable living conditions, for example, noise, other nuisance or risk to health and safety. Reference pages 15 to 18 Sheffield UDP policy. Second quote, development should not make access difficult or unsafe or create problems of parking on roads or streets. Reference page 17 Sheffield UDP policy. Third quote, everyone has a home that supports their health. Pages 11 to 12 Sheffield Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy. That was where I was going to end it. However, events last night took over. I was going to be handing over the original petition that had 196 names on, but that was destroyed last night. Abbey Glen ran until midnight and the neighbours' mental health was so badly affected that the original petition was burnt out of disgust. They don't believe that it will make any difference. They don't believe us turning up today will make any difference. Residents have lost faith in the council completely and in council officers. Some people refused to sign because they saw the petition as a waste of ink. I'm an optimist. I believe that things can change. Please prove me right. Do something. Don't let the pessimists win. Don't let Abbey Glen tear this community apart. Thank you. Oh, questions? Questions, sorry. Questions? You want some questions? Well, I'll give you some questions. The first question is this, what is amenity in a planning sense and what therefore is loss of amenity? It's written all over the documents that we sign, but if we haven't lost our amenity, then I don't know what we've lost. Point, question two, how is it possible that a noisy, smelly factory like Abbey Glen can operate on a B1 site in a highly populated area and furthermore escape prosecution for planning breaches? Third question, do you think it's acceptable that the file relating to the original planning application from 2003 has gone missing? And will you immediately launch an investigation to find it? Or do I have to go down the route of freedom of information? I'm finished now, thanks.
Thank you, Mr Corey. We also have two other people who would like to ask questions relating to Abbey Glen. If that's okay with you, Mr Corey, we'll bring them forward and ask their questions and then we'll refer everything over to councillor Mazurikbal. So the first one is Delphine Himsworth. Thank you.
Hello, Lady Mayor S. We want to, I live by the side of Abbey Glen and since they opened, no sleep, as I said, 12 o'clock last night. A lot of the people that live around are worried about not being able to open the windows. Someone did ask one of the people at Abbey Glen, why should we have our windows open on a hot summer's day? I have COPD, I'm 72 years old and I can't sleep with my windows closed, I need fresh air. That's one of the points. Another point is the mental health of it, not being able to go to bed when you want to go to bed, not being able to sleep when you do because of the noise and the smell, not being able to go into my little garden and sit outside in an afternoon because you've got the smell. Another point of that is what about the people that work nights? They have to get sleep in the day, they can't because the noise is too much. And another thing about is people's mental health, people are suffering because of this. People are selling the houses and moving away. Why should we have to sell our homes that I've lived in for 17 years because I cannot get to sleep when I want to go to sleep? And another point of that is with Abbey Glen, they had to move because there was a fire hazard. Now, this smell, like Shaun says, it's not linoleum or washing powder, the smell is absolutely horrendous. Are they using chemicals that they shouldn't be using on this site? We're frightened of our homes if it sets on fire or anything happens to that. Our homes are going to go up as well because they are so close. All we have in between them and us is a footpath. Thank you very much for those. It's something to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn Godson, if you'd like to come forward to the microphone and ask your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My first question, why are the council allowing Abbey Glen to blatantly breach planning rules by having more and more trolleys stored outside, which make noise when moved about? This can happen right up to midnight and when we're trying to sleep, we can't. Second question, why has the council allowed a B2 business move into a B1 industrial estate? Abbey Glen are affecting people's mental, physical and wellbeing with the working hours, smell and noise. My third question, Abbey Glen are now ruining our lives. We can't go in as gardens and relax due to the smell and noise. The smell is that bad that it's affecting us breathing and you can also taste the smell. We can't go to bed when we want due to the noise and not having a safe haven in our own homes. I want to know now what the council are now going to do about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. It's recommended that the petitions refer to councillor Mazurikbal, the executive member for City Futures Development, Culture and Regeneration, together with the questions relating.
Thank you, Gillian. I don't know where to begin. I mean, I walked in and said hello to you folks. I'd gone through the questions yesterday. My first response was, I was upset, angry, it's horrendous what you're having to go through, something very similar, as I said to you when I was speaking to you when I walked in, something very similar is happening in my ward. I also took the opportunity to speak to your councillors, councillor Downing and the Lord Mayor, Gail Smith. And the MP, Clive Betts, has also dropped me a text and I'm hoping to speak to him this evening. I've got a lengthy response, which I'm not going to read out. The question I asked our officers was what more can we do? And as I suggested earlier, the most important thing for me is to get us round the table, your local councillors, your residents, which I'm really grateful, and the residents that have signed that petition, that have taken the time out. We do need to take action. I do have a response to some of the questions you've raised. For me, that isn't going to allay some of the issues that you've raised. The most important thing for me is to, and the officers are doing this, I'll address some of the points you raise. I have to apologise regarding the planning application. Unfortunately, we were moving from paper to digital and somehow we've lost that application. All I can do is apologise for that error. Regarding the noise, the enforcement action, the hours, it's just not acceptable. Any colleague of mine in this position would be saying something very similar to myself. It's unfair for you as residents and the wider community having to put up with this. Enforcement officers have said to me that they are looking at taking action. I do have a meeting with head of planning, I think it's tomorrow or Friday. This is on top of my agenda. I've also left you my details and we've got yours. So the most important thing for me is to arrange this meeting with our officers and when we have that meeting, I will give you an update. As councillor Downing pointed out to me when I spoke to him this afternoon regarding the monitoring of the noise, the environmental protection monitoring, but from both the Lord Mayor and councillor Downing, it seems like it's not working. So for me, I'd like to hear from our officers with you in the room, with your local councillors and the MP. And I am determined to ensure that we address the issues around odor, noise, because we all, when it, I mean, today it's cold, a couple of days ago we had the sun, I had the windows open, it's unfair for folks to keep their windows closed, not being able to enjoy the weather like everybody else. So like you, I'm determined that we're going to resolve this issue. So it's a message to Abbey Glen that we won't tolerate this no more. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Can I thank councillor Mazurikbal for that? And as soon as possible, we'll arrange that meeting. So thank you very much. Thank you. I'll continue with public questions. The next one is from Fiona Milne. Ms Milne, if you'd like to come forward to the microphone.
Hello. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I have a couple of questions regarding Burly Spa. Even though Burly Spa is a grade, is a unique Grade Two listed building, actually signposted by brown traffic signs that are for indicating nearby recreational cultural interest sites, even though Burly Spa has been a community building since the 60s, even though the legacy of Alan Bailey, MBE, for our community is Burly Spa, even though the council's failure to maintain the building following the restoration has allowed it to deteriorate to the state it is now, even though the sale of the building was halted due to public outcry... it is now, even though the sale of the building was halted due to public outcry, even though Burley Spa was made an asset of community value in November 2019, even though the Friends Group wanted the building to become, with the help of a council, a green community hub for mental health and wellbeing, education and nature, even though Sheffield City Council declared a climate emergency in 2019, mentioning amongst other things that a fairer, greener city is better for all of us, even though from the results of the I1 project, improving wealth, improving wellbeing through urban nature, a three-year project that was taken into account by the council when shaping their green and open space strategy and the Sheffield Strategy for Mental Health and Wellbeing, and which validated our proposals for Burley Spa, even though the Covid pandemic proved the value of the spa for mental health and wellbeing beyond any doubt, even though health professionals contacted us about green social prescribing at Burley Spa in the wake of the developing mental health crisis, but were unable to use the site due to lack of facilities because the building is in disrepair, even though public health funding can be used for capital projects, and even though the National Lottery Heritage Fund has said they would consider an application in relation to Burley Spa again, even though the council cites a duty of care to the building and yet left said building knowingly insecure for almost two years rather than replace the front door, which allowed massive water ingress into the upper floor. Despite all of the above, the council chose not to support the Friends of Burley Spa. Our first question is simply why? The council said that we needed, and they would pay for, a professional business plan in March 2020. They then reneged on that six months later, saying it was too expensive, suggesting instead that we get a cheaper quote or even get students to do it. We were unable to do this, as in September 2020, the council wanted to explore the possibility of finding funding to make the upper floor residential. As such, we did not know how much of the building would be covered by any plan. Plus, we were told that the council was going to undertake a feasibility study regarding having a listed residential council property within Parkland. In October 2021, we were told the cost for residential conversion would be between £1.7 and £2 million. We can only assume that the council would not be able to pursue that option. We have not seen any feasibility study. We have now been told to find £400,000 to cover the cost of repairs and provide a business plan. We have no means to apply for funding for the building without tenure or a partnership, as the council are very well aware. We have no reason to trust that the council's stance would alter even with a cast iron business plan. Our question is, the council have stated that they do not want to set us up to fail. If so, then what would you call this? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll refer your question to councillor Kate McDonald.
Thank you for the question, Ms Milne. I can't see from this distance whether or not we've met before on the Zoom meeting, so hello again anyway. Sorry, you're just a bit far away. Can I just confirm what I said to you at the time and which I've said several times? The council is committed to working with the Friends of Burley Spa group to secure its future. However, the building is in a very poor condition and the cost of bringing the building back into use is considerable. And we did discuss that in quite a lot of detail when I met with you. Given the significant financial pressures facing the council at the moment, it doesn't have the resources to fund the repair and redevelopment of the building. Therefore, a different solution is required. To this end, as you're aware, representatives of the council, which included me, met with Friends of Burley Spa, which included you, a few weeks ago on the 28th of January to discuss the future and the way forward for the bath house. And subsequently, that's been followed up by Janet Sharp, I know because she's messaged me about that. It's clear that there are considerable challenges in bringing forward the building for community use. And I do understand your frustrations, that, you know, you've tried a number of things and solutions to bring the building back into use. A number of technical reports have been commissioned by the council to establish the cost of repair, and these have been discussed with you. And you're quite right, the cost of the initial repair work is estimated around £400,000. However, as you're aware, repairing the building is only the first stage in securing the future of this important part of the city's heritage. Funding is also required to convert it, run it, maintain it and keep it in good condition. And this isn't an easy building to run or maintain, particularly for a community group with limited resources. Therefore, a sound business plan is needed to ensure that if the community take on the building, that they can afford to pay for the repairs and conversion work, cover the costs of running the building and maintaining it in the future. And at the moment, it's not clear how the Friends Group or a community use of the building would generate sufficient income to cover these costs long term. And that's why we've given you another opportunity to go away and think about it and see if this is something that you are going to be able to... Rather than just ask for a business plan, whether or not you're going to be able to do that. We are supportive of the Friends Group applying for funding to secure the repair of the building, and we're happy to provide a letter of support to the funders, as we do for many other groups applying for lottery and other funding. This is sufficient for any grant application for lottery and other funding and for grant applications to be made. A lease can be granted once funding is secured and a clear business plan produced. Most funders will also require a sound business plan, particularly for the sums required in the case of Burley Spa. This will especially be the case for the lottery, which previously funded the repair of the building for community use. The building was previously leased to a community group, but unfortunately, while the initial repair of the building was completed using lottery funding, the community use did not generate sufficient funding to support the building's ongoing maintenance and the project failed. We need to make sure the same doesn't happen again. You don't want that, we don't want that. So once a lease is granted for the building, the lesssee is liable for the site, including personal liability, and it would be improper of the council to pass on these liabilities to the group without a clear plan in place. The council is concerned that the building is continuing to deteriorate, and we must reach a decision quickly on the future of the building. And we appreciate the amount of work required to pull together a business plan. And therefore, following the meeting, the council has asked the Friends of Burley Spa group review the work they've already undertaken and provide a timeline when and if actually a detailed business case and funding strategy can be presented for consideration. And it's clear that the building is in a bad way and delaying action will only increase costs and risk further damage to this important heritage asset. And risk, sorry, further damage to this important heritage asset. We were very honest in opening with you when we met with you. We want to make sure that we preserve Burley Spa, and I'm sure we want the same thing. We've said to you that if you want another opportunity to develop a business plan to see whether or not you can raise the required funding, we will support you and give you time to do that. But we have to make a decision about it. We can't let the situation stay at ease. Apologies for the long answer, but there is a lot of history to this. And I want to thank you again for your questions. And I'm sure we'll meet again in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies for not explaining councillor Kate McDonald's executive member for Finance and Resources. The next question is from Richard Teasdale. Mr Teasdale, if you'd like to come forward.
Good afternoon, councillors. My name is Richard Teasdale, and my question is: how will Sheffield City Council ensure that their bank is a truly ethical and sustainable bank that puts planet before profit? I'm just going to give you a little bit of context to that. I, like thousands, like millions of people, are quite frankly terrified about climate and ecological crises that are unfolding before our eyes. Earlier this week, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change stated, "Climate change is a threat to human wellbeing and the health of the planet. Any further delays in concerted global action will miss a brief and rapidly closing window to secure a livable future." Just think about that, a livable future for all of us. So last month, incidentally, when the leader of this council in Sheffield Tribune said, in reference to climate change, "It's not like the sky's falling in." Well, I'm really sorry, but the top scientists of the world disagree. The sky is falling in. In 2019, Sheffield City Council declared a climate emergency, and then in 2021, a nature emergency. I was therefore shocked to discover recently that the council's current banking services contract is with Barclays. I detest Barclays. Barclays invests in fossil fuels more than any other European bank, over $100 billion since the Paris Climate Agreement in 2015. Simply put, Barclays is fuelling the climate and ecological crises. The council's banking services contract with Barclays is due to expire in September this year, with an intention of concluding procurement no later than the end of March. In the report of the executive director, it states, "There is an expectation that bidders will abide with the principles of the council's ethical code of conduct for suppliers." If the council is serious about the climate and nature emergencies and their ethical code of conduct for suppliers, then surely they cannot consider engaging with any bank that knowingly invests billions in climate destroying fossil fuels. So, to repeat my question, how will Sheffield City Council ensure that the bank selected in the procurement process is a truly ethical and sustainable bank that puts planet before profit? Thank you.
Thank you. I have two further questions relating to the same topic. Would Corinne Noe like to come forward, please, and ask a question?
Hello. Richard's just expressed pretty much what I was going to say. Barclays Bank is Europe's worst funder of tar sands, fracked oil, gas, coal power and fossil fuels overall since the Paris Agreement. Surely this is a no-brainer for Sheffield City Council? I understand that the council is broke, but honestly, how can we still have our money in this bank?
I have a question also from Maryann Elliott. If you'd like to come forward and ask your question about Barclays, and then I'll bring you back in for your second question that's on a different topic later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lord Mayor. So, just to say, I'll be brief and stick to the questions. It's been so important to hear the Ukrainian voices here today and the motion to acknowledge Sheffield's solidarity with Ukraine. And I'm sure you will want to get on with the budget next. So, yeah, as we know, the council uses Barclays Bank, which is known to finance energy companies to expand oil and gas production. As mentioned by the previous question, as they invest more in fossil fuels than any other European bank, Barclays are chasing short-term profits at the expense of future generations. Will the council commit to divesting from fossil fuel industry rather than inflating it with further finance? Thank you.
Thank you. I refer those three questions to councillor Kate McDonald, the executive member for Finance and Resources.
Thank you, and thank you for your questions. I want to answer them in the order they were asked. I just want to do it more in a chronological order. So first of all, why does SEC bank at Barclays Bank? Barclays Bank's provided the banking services since 2014, so obviously this is an arrangement that has been in place for some years, and that's why it is now being re-tendered. The contract award was the result of a procurement process at that time, complying with the required legislation at that time, including the council's contract standing orders. And we're now proposing to re-procure our banking services via an open competition. So that's the sort of chronological... We are where we are because this has been a contract that's been in place for some time. Now, my answers to the other two questions to Mr Teasdale and Ms Elliott are similar, because your questions are similar. The procurement will be run as an open tender in line with the Public Contract Regulations 2015 to ensure a fair and inclusive process is undertaken. We have to do that. The tender documentation advises bidders that the council will be encouraging environmental considerations and carbon reduction within all future contracts. In addition to price and quality criteria, bidders will also be evaluated on their social value commitments, including fighting climate change, reducing waste, economic and employment related values such as the living wage and equality, diversity and inclusion in the workplace. And there's an expectation that the bidders will abide with the principles of the council's ethical procurement policy and ethical code of conduct for suppliers. So we've had an ethical code of ethical procurement policy in place for some years now, and we're strengthening that in relation to environmental considerations as we speak. In response to Ms Elliott's question, it's a very similar response. We will be undertaking an open and transparent procurement process for the contract for the council's banking services. Potential bidders will be advised that the council's declared a climate emergency and set a target for the city to be zero carbon by 2030. And the council will be encouraging environmental considerations and carbon reduction within all future banking contracts. So I hope that reassures you that we do understand the importance of the environmental considerations. We are working at the moment to try and build these into all of our procurement, and there certainly will be a consideration in respect of the future banking arrangements of Sheffield City Council. So thank you for your questions, and thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Ms Elliott, if you'd like to come back down and ask you a question about community gardens. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this is a question for councillor Teale. I'd like to know what's the council's approach when residents in a community want to tidy up unused open space to start up a community garden, recognising that some areas in Sheffield now have a number of community gardens, and these projects have benefits in terms of community cohesion, mental health and wellbeing, as well as physical health benefits and improving biodiversity. But many areas in the city don't have any, and I'd like to know, is the council supportive of communities who wish to start up such projects, which currently don't have any? Thanks.
Thank you. I refer your question to councillor Alice Santile, the executive member for Sustainable Neighbourhoods, Wellbeing, Parks and Leisure.
Thank you, and thank you, Maryann, for bringing this question. I'm extremely enthusiastic about community food growing, and I would encourage anyone in the community who's keen to do this to approach the council. There isn't currently a fixed process for this. We consider all these kinds of requests on a case-by-case basis. So if you've got an idea about some land that you would like to convert into a food growing area or community growing area for wildflowers and such, yeah, I'd strongly encourage you to approach your local councillors to discuss this in the first instance, or you could write to me currently, and I'd be able to help you look at the potential for that. It's something that I hope that we'll be seeing a lot more of. There are, as you say, some already, some fairly well-established groups with lots of expertise, and I know that the people who are food growing at the moment are always very, very pleased to share their knowledge and information. And so, yeah, I'd just encourage you to speak to them as well, and, yeah, learn as much as you can, and then, yeah, you'd find really good... really good support for it. Of course, it's important, we have to identify who owns the land and when that's all clarified. If it's council land, then yes, I think you'll find that you'll be very much supported if that's something you'd like to do. Thanks very much for your question.
Thank you. The next question is from Sam Wakeling. Mr Wakeling, if you'd like to come to the microphone. Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to Carrie Hedewick. Carrie, if you come forward to the microphone and ask your question. Thank you.
Hello. I'm here as a Sheffield resident, but I'm also here as a member of the People's Assembly, which for those of you that might not know what it is, the People's Assembly Against Austerity was set up in 2013 in the face of the government onslaught after the financial crash to fight back against the cuts to services closures across nationally. In 2010, with the first coalition government, there was Sheffield Anti-Cuts Alliance and there were various campaigning groups set up across the UK, but it was seen as needed for a national body and that's what the People's Assembly Against Austerity was formed as. There is currently Sheffield People's Assembly Against Austerity and they work very closely with Sheffield Trade Union Council. It's a budget meeting, so I think it's quite an appropriate time to come with this question. Given the shocking and criminal cutbacks by this and past governments to the funding allocated to local authorities and given that we are at this moment in a massive cost of living crisis because of rampant free market forces, we need to be fighting back against government policies which are putting the burden of that cost of the crisis on ordinary working people. Can the council please inform us which councillor is now the lead member for the tackling poverty strategy? I know it was Jackie Drayton in the past. Who is the lead officer on the tackling poverty strategy and what immediate action is the council going to take in the face of these assaults on people's living standards? And that's the end of the question, but I would just like to say, very short notice I know, but this coming Saturday, there's been a series of events, protests about the cost of living and we have one. The People's Assembly alongside the Trade Union Council has organised two marches this Saturday, one assembling outside Seddaca at 12 noon, the other assembling at St Mary's at 12 noon and marching up, past the market, Old Market, up Fargate from Seddaca and the other march is coming in from St Mary's and coming up the moor to assemble for a rally at the city hall at 1 o'clock. Everybody is welcome to come and I think we should be putting demands on this government and as a council that has been supposedly, we're getting some kind of levelling up from this government, but I don't think we are. So, what is the government doing and what is the up to date position on the tackling poverty strategy? Thank you.
Thank you. I refer your question to councillor Julie Growcott, the deputy leader and executive member for community engagement and governance.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Good afternoon, Corinne, and thank you for coming along today. This is a really important and very timely question, as you've said. We'll start back in March 2020 when the cabinet approved the tackling poverty framework for 2020-2030, restating its commitment to tackling poverty and agreeing to develop an action plan. Immediately following this, the start of the Covid-19 pandemic, the council worked with partners to deliver a pandemic poverty response which covered the following areas: food boxes for urgent support and working closely with citizens' advice to refer to food banks; helps food banks access supplies; the Covid-19 emergency hardship grants and self-isolation payments; public health grants for the VCF organisations to support immediate extra costs; council tax support liability reduced by £150; supporting vulnerable people group established with partners to support a citywide response, including provision for information for people facing redundancy; free school meal vouchers during school holidays. As we've moved forward from the initial emergency response, we have continued to focus on practical responses while enforcing our strategic commitment by identifying the following clear priority within our one year plan: to support our diverse communities in recovering from the impact of Covid by taking visible action to fight poverty and inequality. This work now sits under the leader of the council, councillor Terry Fox, while Eugene Walker is identified as the lead officer. We have been working internally with partners on the following responses: continuing to facilitate the supporting vulnerable people group and response to the issues identified; working with partners to convene a citywide response to the financial cliff edge where many are now facing as a result of the government policy and cost of living crisis, including looking at making the most of resources in the city, providing support and information on welfare and benefits, looking at specific issues around addressing the housing drivers of poverty. The Financial Cliff Edge Group sits under the Sheffield City Partnership, been hosting an anti-poverty summit on the 15th of October, which brought together a diverse range of people to focus the challenge of identifying actions. Speakers at that summit were councillor Artis and Mohamed, Greg Fell, the director of public health, Debbie Matthews from the Manor and Castle Development Trust, Gulnaz Hussain from the Fervale Community Hub, Taran Baktar and Tracy Newman from Shelter and councillor Fox. Using the insight from this summit, the Financial Cliff Edge Group to inform the poverty action plan which are currently under development; using frontline conversations over the next few months to talk to residents about financial inclusion, focusing on those we know are struggling right now; providing people keeping well, early years, social workers, housing associations etcetera with support with briefings and information about changes to resources and support as they occur. We have citywide communications with similar messages to make sure we are reaching other groups such as private sector landlords and tenants. We have developed a new website along with the worrying about money leaflet. We're supporting the voluntary sector organisations who are stretched to breaking point and will be supporting people who fall over the cliff edge through initiatives such as the VCS Recovery Fund. We protect financial support for individuals where possible in light of the continuing crisis, the continuation of the emergency hardship support, including household support fund and the review of the Sheffield City Council hardship support; supporting private rented tenants through the wider top up scheme; re-energising the corporate debate approach and continuing to provide council tax hardship scheme; supporting holiday activities and food provision. Today, our budget proposals include another £200,000 to increase our council tax hardship support scheme, which is now £2 million; supporting Sheffield in the most financial need. Analysis of the awards made under this scheme show that over 90% of the awards that have been made are to working age taxpayers. And as I say, Carrie, thank you very much for your question today and thank you for the information about the marches on Sheffield on Saturday, which I do know have been circulated to councillors. Thank you.
Thank you. The final question's from Matt Wilson. Mr Wilson, if you'd like to come forward to the microphone and ask your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's come to my attention that the residents of Mortimerly Close in High Green were informed during the development of Thorncliff Leisure Facility that due to the construction traffic, the council would surface the road even though it was not an adopted highway. Having made inquiries as to why the road has not had the repairs completed, officers from the Culture and Leisure Services informed me that the traffic movements for the development of the leisure centre were far less than they originally anticipated and the condition of the road prior to the development was documented as poor. Can you confirm whether the residents of Mortimerly Close were informed of this decision and whether the registered landowners of Mortimerly Close will be responsible to undertake the repairs, improvements of the road conditions and whether they would have a chance to comment on this decision? The residents were left in clear indication that following the completion of the work on Thorncliff Leisure Centre, that they could expect some resurfacing of the road. Would the council be prepared to commit to filling in existing potholes while the precise details of what was promised is established? Thank you.
Thank you. I refer your question to councillor Paul Wood, the executive member for housing, roads and waste management. Councillor Wood's asked me to let you know that there may be a slight delay in his response due to the fact that he uses voice activation software. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. I am told there was a formal reply to this question outlining the council decision as to why this was not a possibility. However, should the council have made promises, they should be honoured to assist me in looking into this. I would ask that all written communications any residents have received on this issue be copied into my email, be that formal letter or email.
Yeah, could we have some support down here, please?
Apologies, but just, you know, the technology seems to be our enemy again, but so I'm going to read out.
Are you going to read it out?
Yes, that's what I was going to say. I'll read out the answer, which councillor Wood has already prepared. If that's okay with everybody?
Yes, that's fine.
I'm being pragmatic. So, thank you for your question. I am told that there was a formal reply to this question outlining the council decision as to why this was not a possibility. However, should the council have made promises, they should be honoured. To assist me in looking into this, I would ask that all written communications any residents have received on this issue be copied to my email, be that formal letter or email. So, councillor Wood would like to see copies of any commitments that you've received. Under normal policy, the council cannot do any repairs on unadopted roads as this leads the council with long term liabilities for any accidents or future issues, as well as changing the council's policy on unadopted roads. However, should I find the council has made commitments to local residents, the current position could be reviewed and I will look into this. Thank you for your question and we will get back to you shortly after reviewing all of the facts. And if the council cannot do as you request, there may be other ways forward, such as the parish council through your local area committee, community sale allocation, which is substantial within your area. I'm happy to get you some advice on how to deal with that application should you require any assistance. Please don't hesitate to get back in touch with my office.
Thank you, councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. That concludes public questions and petitions.
Thank you. We're now on to item five on the agenda, members' questions and related to urgent business. Questions on urgent business, there have been no questions on urgent business received from any member of the council, so I shall move straight to item six on the agenda, representation, delegation and authority and related issues. It is moved by councillor Diane Hurst and seconded by councillor Gary Weatherall that approval be given to the changes in the membership of committees etcetera, the appointment of representatives to the serving external bodies and related issues as detailed in the schedule circulated at this meeting. Councillor Hurst?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Weatherall?
Thank you.
Does any member wish to speak? No. I'm now going to move to the vote on this motion. All those in favour of the motion, please raise your hands. Thank you. That motion is carried. Item seven on the agenda, temporary changes to the constitution amendments at the extraordinary meeting of the council meeting on the 23rd of March 2022. There is a maximum time of 25 minutes for this item. This item of business is to approve the recommendations in the report of the director of legal and governance seeking approval for a temporary change to be made to the council procedure rules in part four of the council's constitution to stipulate a process for handling amendments submitted to each political group for consideration at the extraordinary meeting of the council to be held on the 23rd of March 2022. The report was circulated to members of the council and published on the council's website towards the end of last week. The recommendation is to approve additional additions to the section 12 amendments to motions of the council's procedure rules, part four, rules and of procedure of the constitution as set out in the appendix to the report. The purpose of the meeting on the 23rd of March is to agree the governance arrangement for the council's operation under the committee system of governance from May 2022. Please, may I give notice that I have given permission for the public questions related to the council's governance arrangements to be asked at that meeting? The motion to approve the recommendations in the report is to be moved by councillor Julie Growcott and seconded by councillor Penny Baker. Councillor Growcott?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The paper is self explanatory, so I will just formally move it. Thank you.
Councillor Baker?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak? No, thank you. You turned your head there, councillor Johnson. Is that, did you want to speak?
No, I don't want to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Any abstentions? That's formally carried. Now going to take this opportunity, colleagues, for us to all have a break. Can you please be back for five past 10 minutes? Eight on the agenda is the Revenue, Budget and Capital Programme 2022-23. Firstly, we shall deal with procedural matter as regards to this item of business and in accordance with the council's procedure rules four and 11, a motion is to be moved. Suspend council procedure rule 17.5 to move the two minutes limit on speeches of movers and seconders of the amendments and to set new limits of a total of 20 minutes will be shared between the mover and seconder of each amendment and all other speakers shall remain at two minutes. Suspend council procedure rule 17.6 to remove the 25 minute time limit for the item of business and suspend council procedures 17.7 and 17.12a to remove the right of reply for the mover of the motion. Is there a mover? Yeah, I'm calling on councillor Weatherall. Thank you. Councillor Jartan?
No, formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Is everyone agreed? Thank you. We now move to the main business of this item, which is to approve the revenue budget and the council programme and set the council ties for the financial year 2022-23. There is a motion to approve the recommendations made by the cooperative executive and there are four... are four proposed amendments to consider. The motion will be moved and seconded and then the mover and seconder of each amendment will speak. The matter will then be debated. A document containing the budget motion and the amendments number one to four was circulated this morning by email to all members of the council and has been published on the website with the agenda for this meeting. Paper copies have also been circulated in this venue. The motion to approve the recommendations made by the cooperative executive at its meeting held on the 16th of February 2022 is moved by councillor Hurst and seconded by councillor Weatherall. Councillor Hurst?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Weatherall?
Thank you, councillor Weatherall.
I call upon councillor Kate McDonald to move amendment number one and your seconder may speak for up to a combined time of 20 minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I take great pleasure in moving Labour's amendment to this budget. But first, I want to put on record my thanks. First to all the staff in finance and resources who have put so much work into getting us to this point with the budget. I would also like to thank the trade unions who have worked alongside us to implement a fair and transparent process to manage change in these difficult circumstances. And I just say to Lib Dems, please note that. This year has been a difficult year for all of us and I think that's probably a real understatement with the ongoing impact of Covid alongside significant financial pressures. And this comes on top of more than a decade of Tory austerity. As a consequence, we are facing the toughest budget that I have experienced in my 12 years as a councillor. We can see the impact of Tory cuts and poor decisions all too clearly in our communities. A cost of living crisis, which mean that many of our people have to choose between eating and heating. Meanwhile, more and more people are having to rely on food banks and this is a total disgrace. At the same time, Tory cuts on local government funding, combined with a failure to come up with a sustainable solution to social care funding, make it more difficult for us to support our communities at a time of need. I've spoken before in broad terms about various estimates of how much local government funding has been cut under the Tories. Today, I want to be absolutely clear about what that means for Sheffield. In total, Sheffield City Council has lost a total of £3 billion in grant funding from central government since 2010. Yes, £3 billion. This equates to a fall in funding of £288 million for the next financial year. Just imagine how different our amendments would be today with that level of funding. So I say to government, if you want to talk about levelling up and it's any more than rhetoric, reinstate our core funding. Despite the financial pressures and challenges we have faced, I am proud of our achievements this year. We have implemented key Labour manifesto commitments, including introducing and generously funding local area committees to bring decision-making closer to our communities. We have increased support and investment in youth services, published proposals for a clean air zone, increased investment in our district centres and delivered a number of transformational transport schemes, including psychopaths and school streets and many more, which I'm looking forward to my colleagues telling us all about and reminding us about in the debate. We have also had considerable success in bidding for external funding, including the levelling up fund and a number of substantial funding schemes to transform our city centre and transport schemes. Despite the challenges, I want to be clear to the people of Sheffield that this budget demonstrates Labour's compassion and ambition. We continue to protect the people who most need our support, so this year, despite the pressures, social care funding has been protected. We remain committed to tackling inequalities and we are ambitious for Sheffield. For example, our capital budget shows how we will invest £302 million next year in a whole range of housing and infrastructure projects to make Sheffield an even better place to live. Labour's amendment focuses on extra support for our communities. Our district and local centres are still recovering from the economic impact of Covid and we will build on the success of last year's investment by investing a further £2 million. For Labour, this is about working in our communities with our communities. Our proposals for local renewable energy schemes show clearly our commitment to driving forward our clean growth agenda at the same time as tackling fuel poverty. Climate justice is at the heart of Labour's approach to climate change. We recognise the importance of keeping our streets clean with additional investment enforcement and extending household waste recycling centre opening hours and we want to encourage community cohesion by investing in a series of local projects. These ambitious proposals sit in stark contrast to those of the Greens who want to tax businesses at a time when they are recovering from the impact of Covid and those of the Lib Dems. As far as the Lib Dems are concerned, I say you just don't get it. We want to move more power to mainstream services to our communities, not just lumps of cash to local area committees. So I take great pride and great pleasure in moving the Labour amendment. I move, Chair.
The leader of the council, councillor Fox, to second this amendment.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I first say a big thank you to the officers for the work this year? It's been absolutely unbelievable what's had to go through. But I'd like to say a few words around councillor Kate McDonald, who's took up this challenge, a challenge of setting a balanced budget against some of her own private ideology, but has delivered it in a tenacious determination and in a comradely style to get this over the line. And I would just like to say a massive thank you on behalf of our Labour group to our comrade councillor Kate McDonald. We are all learning to live in this new world alongside Covid-19, but the consequences of the previous two years are being felt and will continue to be felt for many more years. For years, we've been unprecedented demand on our most important services, such as adult social care, support for our vulnerable residents, and it is putting huge strain on our finances. But we will always, always look after the vulnerable people in this city and I am proud to say that we have continued to maintain essential services that meet the needs of our city whilst rising to the increased demand. In our fight against Covid-19, we have closely supported the NHS and in their vaccine rollout to the great success and provided in those early days the PPE above and beyond. We have also continued to support our residents and businesses that have been struggling because of the pandemic. Throughout our walkabouts, I've met many businesses who have thanked the council and the hard-working staff for what they've been able to deliver. Through initiatives such as the free food vouchers during our school holidays, support to the care sector workers, self-isolation grants and the recovery support funding for businesses have been delivered in an over of a total of £95 million. But now, we're facing one of the most toughest budget gaps in recent years. A decade of government cuts has now reduced us. We are Sheffield losing out over a third of its funding. And every word, £828 per dwelling, we have been reduced. And coupled with the pressures of Covid-19, that was an initial shortfall facing councillor McDonald and her team of £98 million. £98 million. Despite local authorities playing a key role in our nation's response and to the crisis, the Government's spending review has highlighted that there will be any, no, any additional funding ongoing. We have managed our finances prudently and we have ensured a balanced budget once again. But we have been left to make some very, very difficult decisions, sacrifices and savings, something we never thought we would have to do. But that is the price of being an elected member. That is the price of being the power. That is the price that we have to do. We have to deliver a balanced budget. Some of these savings, we would never, ever thought we would have been here. We have had to use £14 million of reserves to plug this gap and this is the only second time since 2010 that reserves have had to do. This is how tough the Tory governments are making it for us, but we wanted to protect our intervention and prevention services and our local area committees, which are delivering around this city. And Labour took the decision to protect this funding as these are crucial, critical priorities for us. I commend the Green Party councillors for getting on board with us this year, but for finding the savings in the three portfolios that they were faced. The savings had to be made, but I do however think it's noteworthy that for years, the Sheffield Green Party derided us for making cuts and now they've had realised that we weren't doing it, the Tory party were forcing it on us, and now they've got a deal. We've had no choice but to make these. I do however, it is disappointing to see in the amendment that they've claimed that austerity has been embraced by the big political parties, rather than targeting their aggression and abrasiveness towards these government policies that have squeezed the life out of local government. We're delivering on all our commitments. The red lines that we put down, we are now delivering. Our new local area committees are giving power to local people. On my walkabouts around this city, the information I've got from local residents, from businesses, from community, it's gold dust. It's gold dust to be, the way that they're feeding in and coming in. We've come out from under the blanket, but I've just needed to say that just before we came out at noon today, yourself and Julie Growcott, we had a meeting with our like officers, who's pleaded with us to carry on these critical, crucial priorities. And now we are seeing that through them as well, we also last year managed to deliver £8.4 million funding for the VCF sector. But we didn't stop there. We carried on with our youth services. We've rolled that out. We're now being delivered in every ward across this city and targeted work wherever. That is us delivering from cradle to career. We are with our young people in this city. We are also introducing a new approach to community safety with additional safe neighbourhood community wardens, who I visited in my own ward, without picking up that vital information and providing that conduit between residents and council. And when I went on my walkabout, I went with councillor Sir Olston and councillor Andy Sangar up to Westminster, where there were a welcoming committee, telling us the problems that they have on their communities, their drugs, their problems with antisocial behaviour. But it's us that's delivered them, community wardens. It's us that's delivering those individuals for that respect, for those residents. Lord Mayor, we've not only delivered big numbers, we've actually delivered within our communities. We've delivered on the walkabouts that I've been on. £591,000 for Forge Dam, we saw fantastic and it's got to be credit to local councillors that's delivering that project. £421,000 to Norton Wood seats pavilion. £1.1 million for Parkwood Springs to get that off the ground. £420,000 for those pre-part drainage. £248,000 where we're out with Victoria Bowden and Alan, we saw the work that were going in there. And what did they say? Want more toilets? Well, that's Sheffielders. We get praise the grumble. £100,000 to Sky Edge, £3.8 million to the General Cemetery, £240,000 to Mother Road and a million for in my own ward to Pipworth to get out that dining room extension. But we need new schools, not patching up old buildings. We've heard today about buildings that we've got to look after. We need that investment going forward. Lord Mayor, we are making great strides in rising to the challenges, but we've also got the challenges of the climate emergency. But this also presents opportunities for clean growth. That's why in our amendment, we put extra money in there. That's why we're committing £16.8 million in our growing and inclusive economy via with councillor Mazurikbell, rolling out that good jobs and that living healthier lives. That's why we are investing over £53 million in our housing stock. Because when we met developers, they said that we needed to get the fabric of those buildings right. It's all right having the software, but we needed £53 million we're committing to get the rest of our 7,000 stock up to EPPC levels, to bring down them bills for those families that need it, that those families are on the hard line. We're also rolling out in the 10-point plan that £50 million plus programme of active travel, connecting cities and also the electric charging vehicle points. We're also through Biz looking at our heat networking zoning programme, where the existing heat networks can provide the lowest cost, the lowest carbon form of heat to large domestic and industrial sectors and our public sector buildings. We've delivered the local plan that we said we weren't being able to. We've delivered the spatial options through this council. We've been able to work and stand fast with our communities and our Sheffield residents. Lord Mayor, I put forward that this last may told us we couldn't deliver this. We've delivered it and we've delivered plus. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Can I now call upon councillor Clement Jones, please, to move amendment number two. You have a second and your, sorry, you and your second may speak up to a combined time of 20 minutes.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. First, I have to thank all the officers who have helped with the preparation of the budget and especially with the preparation of the shadow budget. Especially within that, I had to have to thank Dave Phillips, who I think this is his last budget. He's helped me with many budgets. He's been on the audit committee and has helped me many of the years. I mean, his catchphrase is, I'll get right back to you on that, and he always does. So thank you very, very much, Dave. And thank you very much to Peter Carr and thank you very much to Peter Fancier, who sadly can't be here. Do get well. I hope you're not watching. Also, thank you very much to my shadow cabinet colleagues and all my wider colleagues. So I do, would like you to be voting for our amendment. So it does have action on recycling in so many areas, on plastics, on food recycling and blue bins. It is possible within the financial restraints that the previous speakers have mentioned to deliver these things, to deliver what the priorities are for the people of Sheffield, what the people of Sheffield have been telling us has been needed. Support for our libraries. I mean, it was tragic what happened to our libraries, obviously. Now, they, you know, they stepped up to the plate and our libraries are doing great, but we want to give them a great deal more support so that they can spread that work wider. Again, our local, where on? Sorry, lost my place there. Yeah, thank you. Citizens of Vice Bureau, we want to help them get back to face-to-face meetings. It's so important. I mean, I know that that human element is really what's needed in a lot of these instances and that's what we want to help get back. Again, in recovering from coronavirus, we want to help our lunch and clubs. I know we all love our lunch and clubs and they do a great job, but, you know, they need to get back into how they're operating before. And as I say, some of them, you know, have lost members and need to build back up. We want to support our carers. We want to support the foster parents who do such a great job for our city and we need more and more. It's gratifying that we do have more and more foster carers. You'll see that the number that we have to pay for this has gone up in our budget and that is because of the great work that the council's done and to increase foster caring and to increase our foster carers. We want to look after our young carers as well, to help them get transport around the city, to make their life that little bit easier, to thank them for the great work that they do that's helping this city, that's helping all of us to look after those that are vulnerable. Again, in our, in the speech before, we talked about the setting up of the local area committees. I've spoken about this before in that I think, you know, we've done a decent job so far. I think the officers have done a good job, but I don't think we've gone far enough. I don't think the ambition's been there. I don't think that we've had the right vision for the local area committees that there needs to be to take them that bit further. And we want to set the local area committees free. We want to give them the right amount of resources. I think, you know, to be honest with you, I think the officers have done a great job, but I think they've been under-resourced. And if you also look at the structure of it, you'll see that it's And if you also look at the structure of it, you'll see that it's lopsided. You'll see that some areas, some local area committees have two workers, people working on the ground, others only have one. And that's a multiplier effect because a lot of the pots being spent by the council is already being directed towards those areas. And so this just multiplies that problem. It was very generous of you to double the amount that's given in local pots. But actually, that doubled the amount of work on the ground without doubling the amount of people that were there to deliver it. So, you know, I think the people, the members of the LAX do have that vision. We need to set them free, we need to give them the right resources, we need to give them fairer resources. And we need to allow them to get into all of those things that you seem to want to hold in the centre and dole out. So, you know, it's very much, we have this budget, you can do this, you can have basids, you can have this. There doesn't seem to be that innovation that's being allowed. So that's what we want to do, we want an innovation fund to set them free so that they can help tackle climate change at a local level. They can tackle opportunity at a local level without having to, you know, let's face it, underfunded. Let's have fairer funding from the SIL. Let's make sure that where it's raised, it is fairer. I don't say that it should be split exactly where it's raised. But I think the people who are actually providing this need to see what it's paying for. Why is it only being concentrated in certain areas of the city when actually the need is across the city? When development happens, that, you know, that development means there's a need in that area. And so to just redistribute it in the way you do is entirely unfair. So I think, I think I'd paint a different picture in terms of what the city's brought in in grant funding. I recently read a report from the Order Committee on external funding and how it's been brought in. I didn't paint a very good picture in terms of the organisation of it, it doesn't sound like, you know, behind the scenes, we have been doing quite exactly enough. And it's not, I'd say it's kind of a failure of leadership in that we haven't, we haven't got a hold of this. We don't know, left hand at times doesn't appear to be what the right hand is doing. And so we may well have lost out on a lot of grant funding that we could easily have got across the city. Or even, you know, it's late or we've got two offices working on it at the same time. So I think it's the leadership on that that's been missing and we need to get hold of that. As I say, I think the Order Committee will be looking at that at some point. It's always gratifying to see our budget amendments come back. It's very good to see our opening hours for recycling from the Labour Party. It's good to see the freebie from the Greens and our favourite, the trade unions from the Tories. One note of caution, I would say that up until now, the Greens have been removed all policy offices from the budget. I noticed they've removed it and now our Tory has decided to do the same. I think also I'd just like to note our prescience, we did take a £50,000 saving from Welcome to Yorkshire. Turns out they've gone into administration, so a good thing we didn't hand that over. Although, as I say, the three labour and three amendments do have things that we recognise as Liberal Democrats and it's good, it's good to see them in there. I'm afraid we will, we will have to be voting against them and I do urge you to vote for the Liberal Democrat amendment. Obviously, when it comes to substantive, we will have to think very carefully if the budget is amendment as to exactly how we're going to vote. So with that, thank you all very much. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
May I call upon councillor Shafat Mohammed to use the remaining minutes left from that speech, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to first start by also echoing the comments from councillor Simon Clement Jones in terms of our thanks to Dave Phillips in particular. And the help and support is not only given this year to us but throughout the last few years and we wish him well on his retirement. And similarly to one or two of the other finance officers that have come before our policy, be budget meetings and others who are retiring. In particular Paul Schofield as well, who I've known for many years within various departments, Dell and Place. I also want to thank the work that Simon's done on this. Simon Clement Jones has really worked hard on this to actually help our group develop a liberal alternative. So what's an offer from this Green Labour coalition? We may well have seen the first shots of the divorce arguments between the Labour and Greens. We may hear more from the Greens later on. It's pretty clear that that relationship's not been well. But hey, if it's based on some wobbly foundations over one side of an A4, don't be surprised. What was needed for this city was a coalition agreement that would have actually spelled out what was needed. And you would have fought, that you would have had a joint Labour-Green budget, given it's been a joint Labour-Green administration. But instead, they are beginning to start to fight each other at the moment when actually aren't they supposed to be running this council? However, 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 we must move on. Hecklers can heckle, but I have the mic, you will have your turn later on. This budget, in my view, sets out our liberal vision for the city, which is truly about devolving power and decision-making to local communities. Working alongside the new committee system, let's be honest, which is all just restructuring the old community assemblies that we had. That was beginning to make a real difference to people's lives. And I hope Labour really learn that lesson of centralising doesn't work actually trusting communities. But unfortunate for me, I don't think that's in their DNA. So they'll have to take some lessons from the Lib Dems in terms of some of the, not just having a committee, but it's how it operates. And clearly, Lord Mayor, we do have a huge problem in the sense of that our, not just our city, but our country and the world in particular has been hit by Covid. That's had a huge effect particularly on the social chaos budgets this year. And clearly, we as Lib Dems feel that the government's approach to that has been wrong in terms of raising national insurance. We think there was a better alternative in raising income tax and I hope the Conservative colleagues sat here will take that back. Clearly Brexit has had a huge impact on us as a city and as a local authority, there's no doubt about it. So Brexit and Covid have had a real impact. However, that's been aggravated by the inept leadership that South Yorkshire has had from Labour Party. We've seen Labour leaders squabble despite having a mayor in place. That squabbling has not just been to the cost of the Labour Party, it's actually cost us millions in guaranteed funding if you had a functioning mayor much earlier. And a potting question is a transforming cities, colleagues, where those mayor authorities that had a functioning mayor would get that money automatically. And the rest of the councils, including us here in South Yorkshire, had to bid for it with the rest of the country. That shows the cost of Labour. And clearly, we hope that the new mayor, whoever that may be, and I hope it's councillor Arton, sat in front of me. Because if it is councillor Arton, I'm sure that he will do the right thing for the people of South Yorkshire, which the previous mayor has not done. Which is to actually get real when it comes to transport and actually start to stand up against the bus companies. Because for too long, that cosy relationship that the bus companies had with the Labour council here in particular in Sheffield. Where, as Ian Oakland calls it, it wasn't a bus partnership, it was a cuts partnership. We put public money in to make infrastructure changes that benefited the bus companies. And what do they do? They cut services and they raise fares. So we need a mayor for our region, Lord Mayor, that will actually deliver. And I really hope it's his councillor Arton. Earlier, we heard from councillor Fox about looking after the most vulnerable. And he was left with some very difficult choices. But clearly, one difficult choice he's not made is to actually go up to his trade union chums and say, guys, you've had it good for too long. It's time you actually defended for yourself like so many. So why is it that nearly half a billion pounds worth of taxpayers' money that could go towards helping luncheon clubs, could help renovate parks. Instead is going to those trade union officials that are, they're representing their members. But the members who in the past have asked me, where are their subs going? And it's a genuine question. If we as taxpayers of Sheffield are funding these trade union conveners, so where is their money going? Is it going into investments in hotels that like Unite have done, that have lost them millions? Why are we paying for incompetent trade union barons that exist nationally that the taxpayers are funding? And similarly, the council has continued with its spin doctors while cutting frontline services. And clearly, they've had some costly consultants. And I cannot pass comment on SIV, particularly while I'm sat here, the millions that have been invested in SIV over the years. And of course councillor Peter Price, I will not let pass the legacy of decisions made by people like you that have cost this city millions. I.e. the World Student Games. Cue the heckling, cue the heckling. We had the millstone of the World Student Games round our neck, which was left by those Labour councillors. Some of who were here and some are sat in Parliament. That's the real cost of Labour. But let's move on to what we've actually got here at the moment. It's alright heckling councillor Lodge, I'm going to talk about the Streets Ahead programme. And I hope that, I was asked a question recently, will I engage fully in the so-called independent inquiry into Street Three Felling? I said, I'm happy to engage, not that I think I've got a lot to answer for. It's people like you councillor Lodge and councillor Terry Fox and Jack Scott, if he was here. And others who are cabinet members for the decisions you've made. And I really hope you do learn lessons from that inquiry as you move forward in terms of other meaningful ways of engaging with our citizens. As we move towards the last few minutes of my speech, Lord Mayor, let's look at what we can actually have. We can have a listening council from the Lib Dems. The alternatives are that actually we'll, we'll actually trust communities. So when it comes to SIL money, that actually, those communities that are disproportionately affected by those developments should have more of a say and keep more of that money. It's only right and fair and proper. How can it be right that the Labour Party want to devolve decisions to LAX but then want to hoard the SIL money? Should we not actually trust councillors more in terms of rather likes to actually have a higher percentage of SIL money allocated? So that's what you get with the Lib Dems. Also, we want to actually provide bring out your rubbish days. I remember a young junior, Mr Mohammed, coming to this meeting virtually a while back with a petition. I think councillor Downing might remember that, where he was asking for a bring out your rubbish days. I've yet to hear about any of them happening, even though he went away thinking they were going to happen. Because on that day, there's also another petition from the Mosbury area that was asking for something similar. So actually, when are those, when are we going to get our bring out your rubbish days? Because it clearly doesn't feel like it'll happen under Labour. And clearly, when it comes to recycling, we want to actually help our residents do the right thing by giving them a larger blue bin. Because the way the trends are, more people are shopping online, generating more cardboard. And we've all seen the problems on the Bring It sites and also the localised recycling centres that we have with all the cardboard being dumped there. Why not allow people to have a bigger bin, those who can have it? This is the difference, the Lib Dems trust in people, Labour like to control. And we want to make our city a great place to live. And that's why we want to actually invest more in our greener Sheffield pot. To actually again, trust people to actually decide what they want, not us to dictate from the town hall. So clearly, Lord Mayor, there's some choices to be made. And I can't let the comment pass about investment in youth services. Colleagues might not have paid much attention, for the last two budgets, Labour have crowded about an extra £2 million, £2 million in youth services. But I'm sure you as councillors will be scratching your heads thinking, well, where was that spent? How many extra youth work sessions were delivered in your own wards? And those of you that keep a close eye will say, not a lot actually, because simply, they've not happened. So yet another Labour promise. But one thing I've spotted, instead of being £2 million extra this year, it's 1.5. So there again, Labour's already cut youth services without any extra sessions being delivered. How can you trust them going forward? Clearly, Lord Mayor, business investment is the way forward, but can we really trust the Labour council that's not delivered? Not only for the city, but the rest, not in the city centre, but the rest of the shopping areas that have been left neglected for so many years. And I think it has to be led by the likes of councillor Martin Smith, who's actually got a genuine track record and experience of business. To actually lead our city's business recovery. That's why I commend this budget to colleagues. If you want a liberal alternative, you want something different from the same old, same old Labour. Well, Green colleagues, it looks like you've been cut off by your Labour colleagues. This is your chance today to vote for something different and vote for the Lib Dem amendment. Because it will genuinely deliver on the people's priorities, including on the environment. I've mentioned one or two others and I'm sure my colleagues are chomping at the bits when the debate starts to actually add to that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
May I call upon councillor Johnson to move amendment number three. You and your secondor may speak for up to 20 minutes.
Well, thank you, we'd better get back to the budget, I suppose. But that's not much fun, I have to say, Lord Mayor, this is a hard budget. That is the thing, this is a hard budget. 12 years austerity has caught up with us, it's taken its toll. And over the forthcoming year, we've got some unpalatable cuts in public services to make in the year ahead. And they may be packaged up in so-called strategic reviews, but they are still there. And the reality is when those hit, they will hit hard and they will hurt us. That is what austerity is. So of course, it's not a great year for the Greens to be in the administration for the first time. I completely agree with councillor McDonald, it's, you know, been a really difficult one and hardest had in 12 years there. The Greens stepped up to the challenge because that's what people elected us to do. And to be fair, that's why everyone is here. I'm just going to pay a brief credit to my colleagues councillor Alison Teal and Paul Turpin, who can't be here today for their part. We've all found it a hard job. And I might even go as far as extending, you know, thanks and gratitude to all the members on the executive. Because actually, I know that everyone on the executive works hard, carries a lot of responsibility and frankly, doesn't get a lot of pay for it. In terms of thanks, I mean, I, you know, naturally, and it's in our amendment upfront, to convey thanks to, you know, all the officers of the council who have to work with this. Also, you know, all the employees of, you know, the contractors with the council, people right across the third sector, the partners of the council. We're all in a very difficult situation in Sheffield. So a lot of people, a lot of people have contributed to steering the situation we're in through really difficult times and that will go on there. Our budget amendment, it reflects a lot of the work we've been doing in the last year. So there are serious attempts to tackle climate change and serious attempts to tackle social inequality. The point is the two go together, fix one, fix the other. Failed to fix one, you failed to fix the other as well. So not strictly in this amendment, but, you know, we're seeing serious steps towards large-scale retrofitting of housing. It's not the social housing, but eventually we need to find ways, including private housing. So lots have been worked out here, officers are on board with this. But the important thing here in terms of finance is that this is a self-financing scheme over the long term. It's looking at housing for what it is, homes for people and without us having to rely on the government handing out grants. Because the government frankly is not our friend. The government has been cutting us back for 12 years. We need to find ways to sidestep the government, leave them to their own devices and do what we can in Sheffield. So I'm looking forward to more work on what we call the energy strong model over the next year. Or in fact, any other retrofitting that we can do. But that is a workable model. A previous budget wish was to see a team of sustainability officers in the council. And I'm really pleased to see that they're here now, they're doing some really good work. Our budget contains, you know, tools, give them tools to do that. We took a £3 million carbon reduction investment fund. You know, that's really good, that's an important resource to be able to try and meet projects sooner rather than later. Because we are all aiming for net zero by 2030. And I am pleased to see what's in the Labour amendment about an important step towards community renewable energy production. Which is a really important thing that we've been pushing for a number of years. And that's, you know, that is actually very positive there. In our amendment, we've got some overlap with that in the specific, as well as a £3 million carbon reduction fund. The half million for energy efficiency and renewable energy projects in connection with schools. And towards large-scale solar farms. So what we're talking about here are large-scale projects. The time for tinkering ground is over, we need to move forward to decarbonising at scale and making the city better. So that's retrofitting local transport is the other big key thing to tackling global warming. So we have more proposals to expand the walking and cycling infrastructure. And it's all about making walking and cycling a safer and more convenient and more pleasant experience. So that there's more reason for people to do it, less need for people to rely on cars. so that there's more reason for people to do it, less need for people to rely on cars. And we're looking here at where people have got the choice. We get a lot of complaints about illegal parking, and so we've got measures in here that will help address illegal parking and road safety, which is the fundamentals around parking restrictions, and especially around school streets where there is need for enforcement. So we've got that. There was mention of internet shopping, and of course, there's been a massive growth in internet shopping, home deliveries, taxi access, as more people are giving up their cars. But we don't have streets that are designed to cope with that. So we're resting in an innovative experiment to look into what can be done, a feasibility study to see what can be done in situations where our current legislation doesn't match up to the needs of society there. Bus services, as we all know, and probably lots of people in this room have claimed it, we all say we want to improve bus services. We've talked about that for years. Our criticism is that little has been done across South Yorkshire, and that is because politicians across South Yorkshire have actually, as opposed to the rhetoric, have actually subsidised private car ownership, and that's through keeping parking fees down or in some places, free. There is a problem there, obviously. The kind of party we are means that we support public transport over private car ownership. So where there's a choice, we say that people should be using public transport if they can. So we've got in our budget a modest increase in parking charges to raise additional money for all those things. But as well as that, it's a little bit of an incentive to make people think about making the switch from private cars onto buses and trams, which desperately need the passengers on them to help recover themselves from the pandemic, but also because good buses and trams are really critical for all the people trying to get to work and to family and other places around the city when they don't have their own cars. And there are plenty of people in that situation in our communities. The charges will also go towards operating the electric freebie shuttle bus around the city centre. And then when we come on to more serious things, we said, who wouldn't want an extra £9 million a year going into the coffins? We know there are drastic cuts coming in, social services, community services, libraries right across the city. £9 million is what Nottingham brings in through, and Nottingham is a smaller city than Sheffield, that's what it brings in every year in additional income from its flagship workplace parking levy. And just to avoid any doubt, that's not a charge on drivers and it's not a charge on small businesses. What we're talking about is a charge solely on those bigger businesses. When you go past those big insurance companies with the big car parks outside, they make a contribution. It works in Nottingham, could work here, it could be really important. Nottingham extended the tram on that basis, but as well as lots of other things, including more grants to businesses. So requiring big business to contribute a bit more to the needs of the people who have to rely on the bus to get to work is another example of the fight against climate change, also being the fight against social injustice. So that's why we have a forward-looking budget proposal. We want to see change sooner rather than later. We want to tackle both climate change and social justice, and that's why I want people to vote for it. Thank you.
May I now call on councillor Phipps to reuse the remaining minutes left from that speech.
Thank you. The Green Group believes that establishing a workplace parking levy to support public transport and active travel is vital if we are going to have the investment to deliver the public and active transport system we need to address the climate emergency. Employers with fewer than 10 parking spaces would pay nothing at all. It is the larger employers offering more than 10 parking spaces who would pay a fee of £1.17 per day per parking space. There are exemptions for local emergency services, NHS frontline staff and blue badge holders. In Nottingham, as Douglas has said, the workplace parking levy on employers raised more than £9 million each year. Nottingham, a smaller city, another, a Labour council, with the revenue used to fund tram infrastructure, a smart card scheme, electric buses and cycling facilities. Climate justice is social justice. Improving our public transport and active transport in Sheffield not only addresses the climate emergency and air pollution, but provides better services to those who cannot afford a car and reduces car dependency for those forced into car ownership by an inadequate public transport and active travel system. Labour-led Leicester are also looking at introducing a workplace parking levy on the back of the success of the Nottingham scheme, as well as Scotland and many other councils. I'd love to say this is a scheme dreamed up by the Green Party, but it isn't. But it is an example of best practice that we should follow, and we don't care where good ideas come from, we should back them. This is what all forward-thinking, responsible councils should be doing. Other political groups talk about the need to improve public and active transport, but that is just blah, 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 while they continue to oppose a real proven way to fund major improvements. We also believe we should be establishing a park safety improvement fund for improvements such as new lighting, to enable all, especially women and marginalised groups, to feel safer to use parks during winter and evenings, with open consultation with Sheffield communities over how the funds should be spent. This is something that has been repeatedly called for by residents in petitions over years. The additional lighting that will be put in place in the Ponderosa Park is welcome, but we need to be looking at how we can make all our parks safer and more accessible and put funding aside to do that. This fund would be a start. Our amendment also addresses that alcohol, when misused, is a significant cause of many social problems and has a knock-on impact on the work of the police, the NHS and other services. That is why we have proposed to see what a small night-time levy on licensed premises could do to help fund support to addressing alcohol abuse and mental health support. And too often, when we look at the funding of adult social care, the biggest funding item our council has, as a problem too big to be tackled. It is difficult, but this does not mean we cannot do positive things to try to transform the future of how we provide adult social care services. Our proposal is to provide staff to support the development of community-based care cooperatives in Sheffield. Members of the care cooperatives will have a stake in the organisation they work for, and the emphasis is on care, not the profit motive. We will support the development of care cooperatives that will operate on the basis of reinvesting surpluses in improving and extending the services they offer to provide a wide range of care services. These cooperatives will provide all staff of at least the living wage, a training programme which supports development and progression. This model of care provision will also play a role in raising standards in the wider care sector. This is not a pipe dream. Examples of commutative care cooperatives exist, and developing more of them in Sheffield will help deliver better support to vulnerable people and a valued career for people working in the care sector. Please support our amendment.
May I call upon councillor Chin Chen to move amendment number four, please. You have up to 20 minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and may I join other parties in thanking officers for their support in developing my budget amendment too. It has been a challenging two years, as we have faced challenges caused or exacerbated by the Covid pandemic, businesses under pressure, more social isolation and loneliness, local high streets struggling to generate sufficient footfall, a transport system in need of improvement. But it wasn't all doom and gloom. We saw communities pulling together to look after those most in need. We saw businesses doing what they do best, adapting quickly to deal with the new challenges they face. We saw people enjoying the wonderful outdoor space this city has to offer, its parks and green spaces, as well as the Peak District on our doorstep. And despite what other councillors are saying, Sheffield is receiving millions of pounds from the government, and it just doesn't fit the Labour narrative, unfortunately to recognise that. As a council, as a council...
Please, quiet. Just a minute, councillor Chin Chen. Please have the respect for this councillor, as we have all had for your speakers.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As a council, we need to recognise the challenges that have been brought on by Covid, but also see the opportunities we have to make our city a better place. Our role as a council has rarely been so important. As we take both the small and big decisions, we'll need to be actively listening to communities in all parts of our city, from Crooks to Darnell and from Baiton to Stockbridge. Our values and priorities for the city must align with theirs. We shouldn't be dogmatic in our vision, refusing to compromise or forego our ideologically motivated ideas, but pragmatic in our efforts to improve people's lives locally. The local area committees are an important step to achieving this, but it's going to take more than seven committees across the city. It requires a fundamental culture change in how we approach decision-making. If we are going to be successful in our ambitions for the city, whether it's zero carbon by 2030 or a stronger city centre and local high streets, we'll need to take the people of Sheffield with us in every decision we make. So I bring you back to the challenges I mentioned at the beginning of this speech. We need to be working with businesses, local businesses, independent businesses, not against them. So a £2 million district high street fund to support our local high streets and build on the work in places like Hillsborough and Broome Hill is most welcome. I also mentioned social isolation and loneliness. Although many people have found it easy to re-engage in community life, this has not been the case for everyone. Loneliness was a major issue before the pandemic, but one which I fear Covid has exacerbated, with the full impact still not yet known. So I'm calling for seven new sustainable communities officers, one to operate in each local area committee area, whose sole job will be to go out into local communities to offer support and advice to those most in need and connect them to existing community groups who can provide further support. As for transport, we need to work with the South Yorkshire Mayor combined authority and government to put in place a transport system that puts passengers first. The Labour Mayor of South Yorkshire has failed to deliver a bus franchising model for the region, and there appears to be reluctance from some local Labour Council leaders to fully back the model. Franchising by creating a single public body to oversee and manage bus services in the region would be an important step in dealing with many of the challenges our transport system currently faces, namely a lack of accountability, a lack of integration, a lack of affordable fares, as well as infrequent and unreliable services. What we have seen as a result of the pandemic is more people valuing the outdoors and green space. Sheffield has a fantastic and unique reputation as the outdoor city, and we as a council need to do all we can to preserve that. I would therefore like to see an additional £500,000 spent on maintenance and investment in playgrounds, parks and sports facilities. Our outdoor spaces and sports facilities benefit people of all ages and help to improve our physical and mental health. This money would be split equally between the seven local area committees to ensure all parts of our city receive their fair share. One thing I regularly hear from people in this city is that there isn't enough for young people to do. Increased spending on parks and sports facilities will help to challenge that perception, and my proposal to increase youth club hours will also give more young people the opportunity to come together in their communities. But this is only the start. Much more needs to be done, and we need to use innovative ways of engaging with young people to find out what they want for their city and their communities, not just what the council wants. On the issue of housing development and the infrastructure needed to support it, it has to be the case that funds paid by developers as part of the local portion of the community infrastructure levy are actually retained within the local area and not spent elsewhere in the city. It's wrong that this council defines local as the whole city. It's not only unfair, but doesn't make any logical sense, since the whole point of the local part of the levy is to support the areas taking these developments with new services and new infrastructure. It's quite often not the case that residents are against the housing developments, but more the lack of new infrastructure and services to support the additional pressures. That's why the community infrastructure levy is so important, and it's crucial we act in the spirit of what the levy is trying to achieve. And although I recognise the need for a strategic citywide spot, more of the levy should be targeted in the local areas where new developments are being built. And I therefore propose that the neighbourhood portion of the levy be increased to 35%. My amendments will also include funding for developing proposals to tackle air pollution outside schools and to invest in on-street electric vehicle charging infrastructure, additional funding to improve road safety in a more diverse range of areas, and measures that will help tackle congestion on our city's busiest roads. This budget amendment delivers on some of the key challenges facing our city, from investing in our parks and playgrounds to supporting local high streets and businesses. It provides some important answers to the questions over how we as a council lead our city's recovery from the pandemic, and I therefore have great pleasure in moving this amendment. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Chin Chen. This amendment is formally seconded by myself. We now move to the debate on the matter. May I remind councillors to stand when speaking, please? It makes it much easier for us to hear what you're saying.
Pundevod, Lord Mayor.
Sorry?
I was always told that you could not promise things that were against the law. The sale allocation is prescribed by the legislature. Can I have advice from Gillian to give a new gamebook as to what portion of the local causes?
Yes, please reply.
Thank you, councillor Wood. So I can't answer your question, but what I can say is that all of the amendments that have been proposed have been checked, and the way they worded, it's okay. We're okay to put them forward as they are. So there's nothing unlawful being put forward in the amendments.
I'd second councillor Wood, because we've been told you can't spend the additional already.
Could we please take advice from Gillian rather than people shouting out?
That's contrary advice to what I was given when we said the lags were loud, Mayor.
Gillian, you are satisfied that what's been said is okay? Right, thank you very much, we'll move on. I was saying that it would assist staff delivering the roving mic if each time a member is invited to speak, you could give notice, I've got your name, so I'll do that. I'd just like to repeat that it is important that people stand up when they speak. Okay? I'm now going to move to the next person, which is councillor Brian Lodge. After councillor Lodge, it will be councillor Richard Shaw, who's over that side, but I think is sat next to somebody who's speaker.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just starting off, I think, congratulations to the people who've worked on the budget. Just starting off, I think, congratulations to the people who've worked on the budgets and put these budgets forward, and to the officers. I think there's a lot of hard work that's gone in here, it's been a difficult year. I'm underawed by the passion and the rather bland presentation that came through from the Lib Dem budget there. It was almost looking as, you know, you're looking as if it was a bullseye budget, here's what you could have had. I almost expected a speedboat to be wheeled in from behind the curtains and say, 'This is what you could have had with the community assemblies. We've put forward lags, we've put funding in there, and we're all working together on these', and yet you can't accept that the community, that the lags are working and going through. Councillor Clement Jones talks about these old friends that come around, and, you know, they are in there, that's there. We hear the Lib Dems talking about the major sports facilities, conveniently forgetting that they mortgaged, remortgaged those facilities to use that funding to support their priorities. Now, there's nothing wrong with that, because, you know what, I took out a further extension on my mortgage to build an extension, and that's what people do, you sweat your assets. And you did that and blatantly mislead the population of Sheffield. As we got, talk about a free V bus that comes through there, you had the opportunity, but you've dropped that now, because you don't see that as appropriate, because you think you'll have attack on someone else in there. We've got the attack on the trade unions. Research has shown that there are between 8,000 and 16,000 fewer tribunals that are brought forward, and cases that are brought forward because of proper representation, and because of that, it reduces the cost. You keep talking about this and misrepresenting this, and you will put the costs up to this council, because it makes more sense for collective bargaining rather than individual people. Lord Mayor, there are a lot of misleading statements that are coming out in these budgets.
Thank you, councillor Lodge. I need to remind councillors, I'm sorry, I can see that people are still putting their hands up, but we have 10 minutes left for this debate. So I'm sorry, I can't take any more people's names. The next person to speak is councillor Leverie. You've got your own? No, I said councillor Shaw, because I wanted him to have a microphone. Councillor Leverie has got a microphone. Councillor Leverie.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thanks to our officers for putting together a balanced budget in this financially challenging times. I've often said that looking at our reserves policy is a good indicator of how our officers are managing our finances, and the current situation makes grim reading. We are now bottom of the league table for core cities on unearmarked reserves as a percentage of net revenue budget, at just 3.4%. What does that mean? We have only access for usable reserves of less than £13 million and a reserve pool of £273 million. All the rest is earmarked against risk and the debt the council carries. Bearing in mind that £14.5 million of reserves was needed to balance the books this year, there's no chance that £13 million will help us out next year, unless we deliver the savings plan of £56 million. That cannot fail, or our reserves are at risk. There's been a significant increase in reserves this year, councillor Lodge, to support major sporting venues of well over £10 million. It's higher than the income we get from the base council tax increase for this year. That's just to put it in perspective. The failure of the Labour and now the Labour-Green administrations to implement best value principles on financial decision-making through policies such as in-sourcing has led to these financial pressures. Cost-cutting measures, such as reducing children's centres to just seven locations four years ago, drives long-term issues on children and people and family services necessitating a significant increase in budget, and it's not just Covid-related issues that led to this increase.
Your time's up, councillor, I'm sorry. If I'm going to get more people in, I need to make everyone stick to their time. Now, I'm calling on councillor Julie Grocock next, because she's got her own microphone, and then it will be councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, I think I'd like to thank Kate Macdonald and officers who have worked tirelessly on the main budget, and then everyone else connected with the amendments. It's not easy because of the years and years of austerity that we faced in this council. Anyone who's listened to the debates this afternoon will have heard a passionate speech from councillor Fox about the vision, the strategy that we as a Labour group have for this city, about the investment notwithstanding the years of austerity that we faced, we have put into moving this city forward, and will continue to put into moving this city forward. Compare that to councillor Shafak Mohammed and his party of the past. I know we've called them that a number of times over the years, but he really did show us that. His speech this afternoon was backward-looking, it was inward-looking, it gave no strategy, it gave no vision, it talked about his heady days, when he was in EU, when he was with the EU, when he'd abandoned the city, it talked about, you know, the Mayoral Combined Authority, which I don't think is part of what our budget should be about, and then we got on to some outrageous working practices. We are a city of workers, hard-working people, and hard-working people in this city have the right to be represented when they are at work, if they are being treated unfairly, if there is something going wrong. Trade unions add value. Every person in Sheffield who works should be a member of a trade union, and it is utterly outrageous that the Liberal Democrats do not support trade unions. If you are a worker, you really do need to think seriously about if you convert Liberal Democrats. I support the Labour amendment, I support the main budget. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Richard Shaw.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I commend the Lib Dem budget amendment. My views on public transport, active travel and the climate emergency have been aired in this place many times. However, the events of the past week have put a different aspect and impetus on these. In an interview with the BBC last Friday, a Ukrainian MP said that Russian oil and gas is stained with the blood of innocent men, women and children, and called for an embargo on oil and gas from the Russian Federation. Lord Mayor, Putin's pipelines are a noose around the economies and democracies of Europe, a deterrent against standing up to his regime. Thankfully, Britain is not as exposed as our other allies in Europe, although 6% of our diesel comes from Russia. However, if we can reduce our consumption of North Sea oil and gas, we can export more to our allies to cut away Putin's noose from around our necks. If we stand in solidarity with the people of Ukraine, we have a moral duty as individuals, councillors and a local authority to cut off this funding to Putin's war machine and support, as many Sheffielders are as able to do the same, through reducing our consumption and improving public transport, active travel and other things. Not just for the climate emergency, but for the freedom emergency too. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Slava Ukraini.
Councillor Brian. Homeshaw, please, next. Sorry, I should have given you a fair warning, I meant to.
Thank you. There is a lot that's really valuable in the Labour amendment, and I welcome it personally. It is at least a strategic budget amendment, one that looks forward to the future and to future decarbonisation in Sheffield over the next few years. But I want to see more. I want to see more in the Labour proposal about community wealth building. It's mentioned, but there's no detail. I would like there to be more of that. I want the proposal to show that it's more than just words. I also see £3.5 million being put forward for local renewable energy for community and council buildings. Now, this will help to tackle Sheffield's fuel poverty, and it can only be a good thing. I can, of course, also support the commitment in the Labour proposal to putting in place neighbourhood renewal schemes in Sheffield's district centres across the city. But we do need to push for more green than that, and to push our decarbonisation of Sheffield much further. This is what the Green amendment will do. Climate justice is also social and political justice. We need an examination, a study, of how an employer's workplace levy, already in place in Labour run administrations throughout the country, would work in our city. We need to create a carbon reduction investment scheme, and we need to recognise the real benefits of a locally-produced Sheffield energy policy. All of these will drive us forward in achieving 2030 net carbon-zero targets. They all need to happen.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Martin Smith, you will be the last speaker.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, no pressure there. I'll be brief. There are several things I could talk about, but I just want to talk about two. Firstly, the Green proposal for the workplace parking levy, just coming out of the Covid and the terrible pressures that all businesses are under, I'm sure that they really appreciate another tax on their business, and one that frankly isn't very well thought through. You're proposing a tax on businesses with 12 or more employees. Well, that's what your leader just said, and on that basis, John Lewis, were they still there, wouldn't pay, because they were partners, not employees. Also, what you were saying, Douglas, about large numbers of employees for these large legal firms, large numbers of legal guys are partners, not employees, so not thought through. The other bit that I wanted to talk about was the ongoing bailouts for the Sheffield City Trust, SIV. They've been going on for years, and frankly, they're not sustainable. Three years ago, the council had a confidential audit report on how the finances were being managed. It was frankly the worst audit report I've ever read. Liberal Democrats proposed actions that the council could or should take. They were voted down by the administration, who then decided to give them another bailout of £3 million. That has gone on year after year after year, councillor Lodge, and sooner, and I suspect it will be sooner rather than later, some fairly drastic action will have to be taken. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you for that information, councillor Lodge. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number one, moved by councillor Macdonald, which will be recorded via a roll call. I want to remind councillors that we are not going to walk round with a microphone, you need to make your voice loud and clear, and please, everyone else, stum. I now call upon the Director of Legal and Governance. Okay. I'm reminded that we're not sat in the town hall, and we normally ring a bell at this stage to bring people back into this meeting, so as we're short of a bell, I think we might need to just give a few minutes to allow people to come back to the seats.
Thank you for that. There's a couple of our colleagues that I think have gone to the ladies.
I think we are now ready to vote.
Thank you. The Lord Mayor councillor, Gail Smith.
I do apologise. No vote.
The Deputy Lord Mayor councillor, Sean Admire Richards, for.
Against.
Richard Shaw, Sophie Thornton, Bob McCam, Chris Rosleen-Josephs, Anne Woolhouse, Denise Fox, Brian Lodge, Karen McGowan, Angela Ogdenzio, Brian Homeshaw, Talib Hussain, Mark Jones, Sophia Said, Douglas Johnson, Ruth Mercerow, Martin Fitz, Tim Huggan, Mohamed Marouf, Ruth Milsom, Maz Iqbal, Mary Lee, Zahira Nas, Jo Oton, Colin Ross, Martin Smith, Victoria Bowden, Maya O'Rourke, Alan Woodcock, Roger Davison.
Quiet, please.
Barbara Masters, Shafak Mohammed, Fran Belbin, Abdul Kaim, Abtazan Mohammed, Sue Alston, Andrew Sangar, Cliff Woodcraft, Alexi Diamond, Kate Macdonald, Ian Auckland, Sue Auckland, Steve Ayres, Christine Gilligan, George Lindas Hammond, Josie Pazcheck, Terry Fox, Anne Murphy, Tony Downing, Kevin Oxley, Peter Garbutt, Alison Teal, Ben Miskel, Jack Scott, David Barker, Mike Drabble, Diane Hurst, Dawn Dale, Peter Price, Gary Wetherall, Mike Chaplin, Tony Dams, Jane Dunn, Penny Baker, Vicky Priestley, Richard Williams, Lewis Chin Chen, Julie Grocock, Ben Curran, Neil Gibson, Bernard Little, Alan Hooper, Mike Leverie, Anne Whitaker, Mick Rooney, Jackie Sutter and Paul Wood. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. That is 46 for, 29 against, one abstention. That means that was carried. Director of Legal and Governance, we are just about to... Oh, sorry, I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number two by councillor Clement Jones. Can your legal and governance officer please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Point of order, please. Given that we have to set a legal budget, we cannot actually therefore agree another amendment, so does that not mean that we've, by agreeing the first amendment, that the other two automatically fall? Can you advise on that, please?
I think we've got to vote on amendment first, Julian.
Yes, they're voting on them at the moment. So, yeah, they will replace each other. So if you... They substitute, so you can only have one amendment out of the four.
We still have to have the vote. Are there any... We've still got... Have to vote our way through these amendments. I'm sorry, I just have to be patient. It's no different to any other year, so we'll carry on, and we're now going to... We've already been told by Julian that we need to vote on these amendments. You're just wasting time. Can we carry on, please? We now am going to move on the vote on amendment two.
Okay, thank you. Lord Mayor councillor, Gail Smith.
No vote.
The Deputy Lord Mayor councillor, Sean Edmire Richards. Against. Simon Clement Jones.
For.
Richard Shaw. Sophie Thornton. Bob McCam. Chris Rosling-Josephs. Anne Woolhouse. Denise Fox. Brian Lodge. Karen McGowan. Angela Argenzio. Brian Homshaw. Talib Hussain. Mark Jones. Sophia Said. Douglas Johnson. Ruth Mercerow. Martin Fitz. Tim Huggan. Mohamed Marouf. Ruth Milsom. Maz Iqbal.
Against.
Mary Lee. Zahira Nas. Jo Otten. Colin Ross. Martin Smith. Victoria Bowden. Maya O'Rourke. Alan Woodcock. Roger Davison. Barbara Masters. Shafak Mohammed. Fran Belbin. Abtizan Mohammed. Sue Alston. Andrew Sangar. Cliff Woodcraft. Alexi Diamond. Kate McDonald. Ian Auckland. Sue Auckland. Steve Ayers. Christine Gilligan. George Lindas Hammond. Josie Pazcheck. Terry Fox. Anne Murphy. Tony Downing. Kevin Oxley. Peter Garbutt. Alison Teal. Ben Miskel. David Barker. Mike Drabble. Diane Hurst. Dawn Dale. Peter Price. Gary Weatherall. Mike Chaplin. Tony Dams.
Against.
Jane Dunn. Penny Baker. Vicky Priestley. Richard Williams. Louis Chin Chen. Julie Grokut. Ben Curran. Neil Gibson. Bernard Little. Alan Hooper. Mike Leverie. Anne Whitaker. Mick Rooney. Jackie Soutter. And Paul Wood.
Thank you. We have 28 for, 47 against, one abstention. That was cat lost, sorry. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number three, moved by councillor Johnson. Can we have another roll call, please, Julian?
Thank you. The Lord Mayor councillor, Gail Smith. The Deputy Lord Mayor councillor, Sean Edmire Richards.
Against.
Simon Clement Jones.
Against.
Richard Shaw. Sophie Thornton. Bob McCam. Chris Rosling-Josephs. Anne Woolhouse. Denise Fox. Brian Lodge. Karen McGowan. Angela Argenzio. Brian Homshaw. Talib Hussain. Mark Jones. Sophia Said. Douglas Johnson. Ruth Mercerow. Martin Fitz. Tim Huggan. Mohamed Marouf. Ruth Milsom. Maz Iqbal. Mary Lee. Zahira Nas. Jo Otten. Colin Ross. Martin Smith. Victoria Bowden. Alan Woodcock. Roger Davison. Barbara Masters. Shafak Mohammed. Fran Belbin. Abtizan Mohammed. Sue Alston. Andrew Sangar. Cliff Woodcraft. Alexi Diamond. Kate McDonald. Ian Auckland. Sue Auckland. Steve Ayers.
Against.
Christine Gilligan. George Lindas Hammond. Josie Pazcheck. Terry Fox. Anne Murphy. Tony Downing. Kevin Oxley. Peter Garbutt. Alison Teal. Ben Miskel. David Barker. Mike Drabble. Diane Hurst. Dawn Dale. Peter Price. Gary Weatherall. Mike Chaplin. Tony Dams. Jane Dunn. Penny Baker. Vicky Priestley. Richard Williams. Louis Chin Chen. Julie Grokut. Ben Curran. Neil Gibson. Bernard Little. Alan Hooper. Mike Leverie. Anne Whitaker. Mick Rooney. Jackie Soutter. And Paul Wood.
The results are 4:10, against 65, one abstention, clearly lost. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number four by councillor Chin Chen, which will be recorded, and now move to the officer of legal and governance.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor councillor, Gail Smith.
No vote.
The Deputy Lord Mayor councillor, Sean Edmire Richards.
Against.
Can we have some quiet, please?
Simon Clement Jones.
Against.
Richard Shaw. Sophie Thornton. Bob McCam. Chris Rosling-Josephs. Anne Woolhouse. Denise Fox. Brian Lodge. Karen McGowan. Angela Argenzio. Brian Homshaw. Talib Hussain. Mark Jones. Sophia Said. Douglas Johnson. Ruth Mercerow. Martin Fitz. Tim Huggan. Mohamed Marouf. Ruth Milsom. Maz Iqbal. Mary Lee. Zahira Nas. Jo Otten. Colin Ross. Martin Smith. Victoria Bowden. Alan Woodcock. Roger Davison. Barbara Masters. Shafak Mohammed. Fran Belbin. Abtizan Mohammed. Sue Alston. Andrew Sangar. Cliff Woodcraft. Alexi Diamond. Kate McDonald. Ian Auckland. Sue Auckland. Steve Ayers. Christine Gilligan. George Lindas Hammond. Josie Pazcheck. Terry Fox. Anne Murphy. Tony Downing. Kevin Oxley. Peter Garbutt. Alison Teal. Ben Miskel. David Barker. Mike Drabble. Diane Hurst. Dawn Dale. Peter Price. Gary Weatherall. Mike Chaplin. Tony Dams. Jane Dunn. Penny Baker. Vicky Priestley. Richard Williams. Louis Chin Chen. Julie Grokut. Ben Curran. Neil Gibson. Bernard Little. Alan Hooper. Mike Leverie. Anne Whitaker. Mick Rooney. Jackie Soutter. And Paul Wood. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
That was just lost. One for, 74 against, and one abstention. I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion, which will be recorded as a roll call. This takes over. This is now, we're now revoting for amendment number one. Is that clear? Because the substantive, the amendment, the number... So... Does everybody understand what's happening? Okay, let's explain. Because amendment number one was carried, that takes over from the substantive, so... No, no. It adds, yeah, it adds to that, replaces the motion. And becomes the substantive, that's right. Sorry, it's... Yeah. Do we understand now? I'm sorry for the confusion. Okay, I'm now going to move to the vote. Okay, do you need a few minutes to discuss this amongst yourselves?
I think we all have to vote for it, don't we? So we sit on the...
Well, they don't have to. Allowed your colleagues to come back from toilet? Thank you. Right, we're going to move to the vote. Can we have some silence as well, please? Thank you.
Thank you. The Lord Mayor councillor, Gail Smith.
No vote.
The Deputy Lord Mayor councillor, Sean Edmire Richards.
For.
Simon Clement Jones.
Against.
Richard Shaw. Sophie Thornton. Bob McCam. Chris Rosling-Josephs. Anne Woolhouse. Denise Fox. Brian Lodge. Karen McGowan. Angela Argenzio. Brian Homshaw. Talib Hussain. Mark Jones. Sophia Said. Douglas Johnson. Ruth Mercerow.
I'm sorry, but we really do need everyone to stay quiet. Can do your shouting after we've voted?
Ruth Mercerow. Martin Fitz. Tim Huggan. Mohamed Marouf. Ruth Milsom. Maz Iqbal. Mary Lee. Zahira Nas. Jo Otten. Colin Ross. Martin Smith. Victoria Bowden. Alan Woodcock. Alan Woodcock. Roger Davison. No? Roger?
Just say four, fine.
Roger Davison. Roger, can you vote, please? Thank you.
Barbara Masters. Shafak Mohammed.
Can you please stop talking and let's get this vote done, please?
Shafak Mohammed. Did he, sorry, Fran Belbin. Abtizan Mohammed. Sue Alston. Andrew Sangar. Cliff Woodcraft. Alexi Diamond. Kate McDonald. Ian Auckland. Sue Auckland. Steve Ayers.
Against.
Christine Gilligan. George Lindas Hammond. Josie Pazcheck. Terry Fox. Anne Murphy. Tony Downing. Kevin Oxley. Peter Garbutt. Alison Teal. Ben Miskel. David Barker. Mike Drabble. Diane Hurst. Dawn Dale. Peter Price. Gary Weatherall. Mike Chaplin. Tony Dams. Jane Dunn. Penny Baker. Penny Baker. Vicky Priestley. Richard Williams.
Sorry, Julian, there's still people talking. It's not easy to hear what you're saying, so please be quiet.
Richard, sorry, Richard Williams. Louis Chin Chen. Julie Grokut. Ben Curran. Neil Gibson. Bernard Little. Alan Hooper. Mike Leverie. Anne Whitaker. Mick Rooney. Jackie Soutter. Paul Wood. Paul Wood.
Councillors, can you please remain seated? We will, I will get back to you in a minute. You clearly know that that was lost. And it was four thirty-six, thirty-nine against, so that was lost. Now, we have to have, we have to pass a budget, so I'm going to recommend that we... Did you want to speak, Jo? I was going to recommend that we have fifteen minutes for groups to discuss this.
Lord Mayor, I don't think we need fifteen minutes. I'd just like to suggest, in the view of trying to get a legal budget passed, obviously we're in this position because the Greens have changed their minds and voted two different ways, but we would be willing to abstain on the unamended budget, the original budget that was proposed without any of the amendments, if that would help the council move forward and set a legal budget.
Thank you. So we'll have to have another roll call. Yeah. So is everybody clear what's happening?
Can somebody propose?
So we're voting on the original motion.
Lord Mayor, can I propose then that we vote on the original motion that was formally moved today? Can we have a second there?
Thank you, thank you. We are trying to work this out, so if you just give a little bit more patience, please. Right, can I have silence, please, because Gillian's going to explain what's now going to happen?
Okay, it is an unusual set of circumstances for us. We have to set a legal budget. So what we will have to do now, what I'm suggesting, is that there's a motion passed, which I think councillor Terry Fox has just done, that actually we start again with the voting, because members have indicated that if we run it again, they may vote differently, which will save us all having to go away and come back again on Friday. So we, unfortunately, particularly for me, we're going through another five lots of recorded voting in order to get to where we need to get to, hopefully.
Look, Lord Mayor, if we withdraw our amendment from that, would that help? If everybody withdrew and we moved straight to the substantive?
If everyone withdrew their amendments, would we just have to vote on the main motion? So that, so do you need a few minutes or have you decided? And the Greens? The Greens need to have a discussion, so just have a bit more patience.
We will then move back to the original motion that was the Co-Peg's decision. So that will need to be formally moved and seconded by, I think it was Gary and Diane who did that. Then we will move to amendment, and I'd appreciate all these being moved and seconded formally, please, as well. We'll move on to amendment number one. I understand that that will be moved and seconded formally and voted on. We'll have to do a recorded vote on it. We'll then move to amendment number two, which I believe is going to be withdrawn, so we'll need the mover to ask for permission to withdraw the amendment, and that will be seconded. Then we'll move on to amendment number three. I believe the same thing again. The mover will ask for the amendment to be withdrawn and seconded. Then we'll move on to amendment number four. The amendment will be, the mover will ask for the amendment to be withdrawn and seconded. Then we will go on to the substantive motion, which is as amended by number one, and that will be it, hopefully. Does that all make sense? Thank you. So can we start with a motion from the council leader then?
Councillor Terry Fox, please, your motion.
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Is that sec...
Formally seconded.
Thank you. Councillor Fox and councillor, okay, Macdonald have just moved and seconded a motion for us to rerun the vote. All those in favour? Thank you. Any against? Thank you. So now we need the original motion moved and seconded by councillor Hurst and councillor Weatherall. Councillor Hurst.
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Weatherall? Thank you. We now need to vote on amendment number one, which is councillor Macdonald.
Formally moved.
Thank you. Councillor Fox?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And we now need to put that to the vote. There has to be a roll call, so please can councillors be patient and quiet.
So this is a vote on amendment number one. The lord mayor, councillor Gail Smith.
No vote.
The deputy lord mayor, councillor Sean Edmire Richards.
Four.
Simon Clement Jones.
Against.
Richard Shaw. Sophie Thornton. Bob McCam. Chris Rosling-Josephs. Anne Woolhouse. Denise Fox. Brian Lodge. Karen McGowan. Angela Argenzio. Brian Homshaw. Talib Hussain. Mark Jones. Sophia Said. Douglas Johnson. Ruth Mercerow. Martin Phipps. Tim Huggan. Mohammed Marouf. Ruth Milson. Mazza Ikbal. Mary Lee. Zahira Nas. Jo Otten. Colleen Ross. Martin Smith. Victoria Bowden. Alan Woodcock. Roger Davison. Barbara Masters. Shafak Mohammed. Fran Bellbin. Abtizan Mohammed. Sue Alston. Andrew Sangar. Cliff Woodcraft. Alexi Diamond. Kate Macdonald. Ian Auckland. Sue Auckland. Steve Ayers.
Against.
Christine Gilligan. George Lindas Hammond. Josie Pazcheck. Terry Fox. Anne Murphy. Tony Downing. Kevin Oxley. Peter Garbutt. Alison Teal. Ben Miskel. David Barker. Mike Drabble. Diane Hurst. Dawn Dale. Peter Price. Gary Weatherall. Mike Chaplin. Tony Dams. Jane Dunn. Penny Baker. Vicky Priestley. Richard Williams. Lewis Chin Chen. Julie Grokot. Ben Curran. Neil Gibson. Bernard Little. Alan Hooper. Mike Leveray. Anne Whittaker. Mick Rooney. Jackie Sutter. And Paul Wood. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. The results for that vote are four to six, four twenty-nine against, one abstention. That's carried. Now going to go to amendment number two. Councillor Simon Clement Jones.
I'd like to withdraw our amendment, please, Lord Mayor.
Thank you.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Now move to member three. Councillor Johnson.
Formally withdraw, please.
Thank you. And a second for that. Thank you very much. Councillor Chin Chen. I now totally agree. Thank you. We're now going to vote on the substantive, which is the first amendment. Okay.
Thank you. The lord mayor, councillor Gail Smith.
No vote.
The deputy lord mayor, councillor Sean Edmire Richards.
Four.
Simon Clement Jones.
Against.
Richard Shaw. Sophie Thornton. Bob McCam. Chris Rosling-Josephs. Anne Woolhouse. Denise Fox. Brian Lodge. Karen McGowan. Angela Argenzio. Brian Homshaw. Talib Hussain. Mark Jones. Sophia Said. Douglas Johnson. Ruth Mercerow. Martin Phipps. Tim Huggan. Mohammed Marouf. Ruth Milson. Mazza Ikbal. Mary Lee. Zahira Nas. Jo Otten. Colleen Ross. Martin Smith. Victoria Bowden. Alan Woodcock. Roger Davison. Barbara Masters. Shafak Mohammed. Fran Bellbin. Abtizan Mohammed. Sue Alston. Andrew Sangar. Cliff Woodcraft. Alexi Diamond. Kate Macdonald. Ian Auckland. Sue Auckland. Steve Ayers.
Against.
Christine Gilligan. George Lindas Hammond. Josie Pazcheck. Terry Fox. Anne Murphy. Tony Downing. Kevin Oxley. Peter Garbutt. Alison Teal. Ben Miskel. David Barker. Mike Drabble. Diane Hurst. Dawn Dale. Peter Price. Gary Weatherall. Mike Chaplin. Tony Dams. Jane Dunn. Penny Baker.
Against.
Vicky Priestley. Richard Williams. Lewis Chin Chen. Julie Grokot. Ben Curran. Neil Gibson. Bernard Little. Alan Hooper. Mike Leveray. Anne Whittaker. Mick Rooney. Jackie Sutter. And Paul Wood. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we're pleased to know that's carried. Thirty-six, four twenty-eight against, twelve abstentions. I'm so glad that you allowed us to do this today, because I would have brought you back on Friday evening, because I'm doing a skydive in the day. So thank you, colleagues, for that. Have a nice evening. Goodbye.